Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jane Anvik and I’m chairing the Municipal Commission on the Public Hearing Process. And we welcome you this evening to a public hearing, our first public hearing, on what you think about what the Anchorage Municipal Assembly should do with respect to public hearing process before ordinances occur. In the back of the room, you’ll find materials that have been handed out which include an agenda for this evening. It includes the names and email addresses of all the volunteers who serve on this municipal task force. It includes a resolution that was adopted by the Anchorage Assembly when they created this task force. It includes an assembly memoranda that was created when the Assembly adopted the Rules Committee, which is the committee to whom we will be working on our recommendations. And finally, it includes the Bill of Rights of the Anchorage Municipal Charter, one version of, one element of which includes the rights of the citizens of Anchorage to be able to speak at a public hearing prior to the adoption of ordinances. This evening, we’re going to hold, we’re going to have a little bit of a roll call and then I’ll do a little bit of background about what we’re going to be doing this evening. But at this point, I’d like to ask Amanda Moser, who is with the Municipal Clerk’s Office, to please take role. All the people here are volunteers.
Jane Anvik.
Present.
Jim Barnett. Jim Barnett should be joining us shortly. Bob Churchill.
Here.
Penny Goodstein. Joel Hall.
Here.
Andy Holloman. He should be joining us shortly. Tim Potter.
Here.
Carolyn Ramsey.
Here.
Cheryl Richardson. Arlish Stojeluski.
Thank you very much. So, we are volunteers who are serving on a municipal task force. We were appointed in June and we have met three times prior to this evening’s conversation when we’ve had the opportunity to review the laws of the municipality of Anchorage, as well as the laws that have been implemented in other communities such as Fairbanks and Juneau and Sitka and Ketchikan, where there are other local governments just like ours who have been working on the question of what’s the best way to involve citizens in the development of our laws. The members of the committee have also had a chance to look at what are some of the variables that affect whether or not it works well. I didn’t look. And that, among the issues that are of concern are the public notice that people receive about an ordinance that is being considered by the Assembly. Also, it includes what happens when people come to participate? How much time do they have to be able to articulate their point of view? How do they know where their issue is on the agenda? And how do people find out about things that are going on within the municipal assembly? Among the questions that came to pass was what happens when this Assembly Hall is full of people and they all want to talk? How do we make sure that it is an organized process so that the citizens have an expectation and some clarity about what’s going to happen when they arrive here? Those are some of the topics that have been addressed by people who have participated previously. I’m looking out at the hall and I wanted to note that we have an Assembly member who is listening at the public hearing tonight. And thank you to Tim Steele for coming to participate and listen to the public hearing this evening. Our job is to be able to take recommendations that come from you, to look at the law, to look at the experiences that we’ve had, and to try to come up with a series of recommendations that we can make to the Assembly about what can we suggest to make sure that the process of communicating with our government is open, is fair, is predictable, and is one that allows the full measure of comments from people across the community to be able to comment on public hearings, on public processes, before they are adopted by law. One of the questions that came up in the past was that there’s a rule now that if you can only testify once in a public hearing. However, if that, that particular ordinance, as a result of the conversation, is substituted by other language and other ideas, when does a substitute ordinance actually become a new law? In which case, it’s so different from what we started with that we’ve got an opportunity for people to be able to comment again. Those are some of the questions that have come up in, when people have been engaged in their interaction with the government previously, and some of the topics that we’ll be looking at through this public hearing process. In the agenda tonight, you’ll also see that there is, we’re asking for your comment on public process. And in order to allow everyone to testify, to be heard, we’re asking that you please limit your comments to five minutes. Members of the task force may ask you follow-up questions and you’re really welcome and encouraged to answer any questions that they might pose. Additionally, we are recording this meeting this evening, so we request that you tell us your name so that we can have that for the record as part of our deliberation. It appears that I forgot to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So, let’s stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance. [Inaudible] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. With that, I would like to open the hearing and provide people an opportunity to come and tell us what your recommendations are in our consideration for recommendations to the Anchorage Assembly. If you’d like to testify, please come to the front of the room and talk into that microphone. And we’d be happy to hear from anyone who would like to talk to us this evening. If you speak this evening, you are also invited to speak to us again in October, so you don’t have to be concerned about losing your shot. We are, tonight is wide open for what are your recommendations for our consideration in preparing comments to the Anchorage Assembly. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for being here, Mr. Steele. I appreciate that. My name is Daryl. As far as the public hearing process...
Excuse me, Daryl. Can you tell us your last name as well?
Oh, wow. You want my straw man name?
Whatever...
If you want my straw man name, that would be Daryl Anzon.
Thank you.
But my name is Daryl.
Thank you.
My clan is Anzon. But you want my straw man name?
Thank you.
Different. Sorry. Continuing, the public hearing process and the notifications. I am from fluoride-free Alaska. I have been dealing with the Assembly for a couple of years now, going on two years anyway. And something I want to bring up is the notification processes and how they are, they seem to be selective to me and how they’re put out on the municipal website as an example. There was a Public Safety Committee meeting regarding water fluoridation, which happens to be a big issue to me. It affects 250,000 people in this municipality and it affects them negatively. This meeting that they had was notified through an email list. I consider that pretty selective. I can pretty, consider that pretty biased. In fact, I was not even on that email list at the time. The reason that I found out about it is because I got involved with the Fluoride-Free Alaska Group and I found out through members of that group about this meeting, this Public Safety Committee meeting. So, the process needs to be, there needs to be an order put on the chairman of these committees that they need to do this. I know Amanda’s with the Clerk’s Office and the Clerk, they work at the behest of these, of the Assembly members. That’s, that’s on the Assembly members to say, “You need to put this on there,” et cetera, et cetera. So, if they’re not told that, you can’t, I can’t really say, “Okay, why is the Clerk not doing their job?” They have actually been the most helpful people to me in dealing with the municipality of Anchorage. But this meeting, again, it was a selective email list. When we went to this meeting, there was plenty of people from the CDC and the ADA and the Tribal Health Consortium and all these other people who I choose to call fluoride fascists because they think that they can tell me what I can do with my body. And it’s my body and it’s my right to want it in or not. I don’t need that. They all showed up. Jason Agri from our group and a couple other people from our group that we networked showed up, but there was no fair public announcement for this meeting. And I think that there needs to be a fair process for them as a matter of a timeline or something to that effect where they are played out and put in an order that they are on the site, then they start to drop down the site, or they start to move up the site as they get closer in date, so things can’t be hidden on there due to a, a private agenda or influences like that. Because there isn’t a, if you want a fair process, that’s one of the things to make it fair. You know, more about, I mean, that, that’s my biggest concern, is things like that, you know? Other things, that little light right there? The last two times I’ve been here to speak, I got a red light and I didn’t get a yellow light. And I don’t know if it’s going to happen tonight or not, but I said something last, at the last Assembly meeting, that I didn’t. And Mr. Hall assured me that they had fixed it. And then I spoke and my three minutes went, and I didn’t get my 30-second warning because if you notice, I can talk. So, I, you know, and if I get my 30-second warning, at least I know I can wrap up. And I do tend to try to go over when it comes to my fluoride issue because, you know, again, where I’m at a, you know, I get three minutes and it’s a very serious issue. Like I said, I don’t know how much you people know about it, but it isn’t just good-for-your-teeth kind of stuff that you’ve been hearing as you grew up. You might want to look into some of the newer science. And that’s one of the things I’ve tried to get to the Assembly and, oh, look at that! And, you know, haven’t gotten a fair shake as far as I’m concerned. In fact, they are willing to have a public, or a citizens’ task force on the public hearing process, but they’re not willing to have a citizens’ task force on water fluoridation. Water fluoridation has a health effect one way or the other. If I’m wrong, prove me wrong. But it’s worthy of a citizens’ task force. If we are willing to have a citizens’ task force regarding this public hearing process, I cannot see a good reason why we should not have a citizens’ task force regarding water fluoridation. And I want to thank you guys for giving me this opportunity to speak about fluoride when people are actually watching. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We really, yes, there’s a question from Senator Stojeluski.
I’m curious about this public hearing. Was this for an Assembly meeting? What kind of a meeting was it? And I was, and the reason I’m asking that question is, how far should we go to talk about public notice, public hearings?
Well, I guess my first, the answer to the first part is, guys, would depend on when you know.
Mm-hmm.
But I would think within a couple of days of knowing, I don’t, maybe Amanda could tell, how long does it take you to get something up on the site? So, if I told you now, like I’m Assemblyman Anzon, and I say, “I need a, you know, we need to have a hearing,” how, a day? Two days? You know, so something like that upon knowing, I think, would make sense. Now, as far as that meeting goes, I want to bring up that we were told it was being recorded. I have sent emails, and I can prove this, I have the emails, asking for this recording. We recorded it ourselves, but my, my memory wasn’t enough to finish the whole thing, so I didn’t actually get to record myself, being the last speaker and really cleaning up the CDC people and telling the truth. So, that was another problem, is that I was told, like you said, “This is being recorded.” That’s great. I believe you. I believed them at that time. And I didn’t audio-record myself and now that all that testimony that we had is now gone. So, that was, that was another issue that I’ve had. My issue is with municipality of Anchorage and I’ll tell you that the individual people in it, I don’t really see them as individuals anymore. It’s a corporation that’s poisoning the water supply. And that’s how I choose to, will deal with them. If I’m having a private conversation, it’s one thing, but when I’m standing here, I’m standing here as a private Attorney General and I am attacking or dealing with the municipality as a whole.
Thank you.
But that meeting also, to finish what you were saying as far as that, the meeting, it was a public, it was a meeting of a, the Public Safety Committee.
Okay.
And now, these meetings are published on the website. They typically are. That one, like I said, particularly wasn’t. And I think it’s, it says a lot, you know, that, you know, and even now, the fact that we are going, then a week from today, there’s public testimony on a resolution to tell me to go, to go petition for my rights to clean water. They don’t even want to have, like I said, there’s no task force. They don’t, don’t think it’s warranted. They want us to go petition, an advisory petition, mind you, that would, they would take into consideration if we got it on the ballot and it passed. They would consider it then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Tim?
Yes.
Potter?
I, it’s interesting that you...
I’m listening.
It’s interesting that you put so much focus on the website, so I wanted to ask you if the city’s website for notices like that, in your opinion, if it is posted, is it adequate? Is that an adequate place or an appropriate place?
How, the website itself? I use the website all, I’m, I’m comfortable with getting, finding my way around the website and stuff like that. Is it easy? Yeah, because if you, you look at it, you, you want to find public notices. It says something to that effect. So, even if you don’t really know it, you know what you’re looking for, you can kind of dumb your way through it. I think it’s, it’s pretty user-friendly.
And specifically to the Public Safety Committee, how far in advance do they put that notification, if they do, on the website, their agenda?
See, I can’t honestly, I don’t honestly know. I, Amanda would probably be a better guess. I want, I know it’s got to be two weeks to a month in, in advance. They know these meetings ahead of time. If you look on the site right now, you can see meetings that are scheduled months ahead. So, like I was saying to Ms., wow, I can’t say that name. But, you know, like I was saying, it’s soon, you know, as soon as they know, it should be within a couple of, you know, a day to two days before the Assembly member could get it to the Clerk’s Office to do that. But I don’t, I mean, yeah, if I knew about, we knew about a meeting two months in advance, I don’t think there’s any reason to wait a month before to do it. It should be as much notice as possible. The idea is to get this out to the public. So, as soon as they know about a set date for a hearing, there’s, it should be, you know, put out there. People, people want to know.
And to follow up on that a little bit, should the committee at that level, because we’ve got a number of working Assembly Committees and subcommittees, should their, should their meetings be limited to whatever is posted on the website as far as their agenda and their items that are on the agenda?
I would, if I’m understanding you right, I would say yes, because these, a lot of these are, most as far as I know, these meetings have an audience participation section at the end of them. So, I think if you stick, you have an agenda that you’re sticking to and then you have that, like, just to let you guys know, I will be back for my three minutes come audience participation to speak directly on fluoride for three minutes, because you’re allowed to do that. So, I think sticking with a set agenda actually is the way to go.
Yeah, I, I think my, my point was, was really if they have a listed agenda with items on it that are, the public should know they’re going to be speaking on, should their discussion be limited to those items so that, say, fluoridation doesn’t become a topic that was not on the agenda and have it discussed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, if you’re, yeah, if you’re saying, because as an example, I’ve come here before, speaking of, it was when they were talking about the Mayor’s Education Summit. And I’m like, “Mayor’s Education something, Summit? Hmm, I can tie this into fluoridation.” Because fluoride, there’s a Harvard study, it’s published on the National Institute of Health, wealth website, July 2012, that says water fluoridation lowers the IQs of children. So, I went in here to speak about, “You want to get Anchorage test scores up? Take the fluoride out of the water.” And Mr. Hall interrupted me, he said, “Keep it to the...” And I, I played back with him and said, “Well, this is about, you know, the children and, and all that.” So, I, I think using myself as an example, I did push it and I, I should have been stopped to a certain degree maybe, but I did tie the two together. So, if I came into a meeting and started speaking about, you know, snow removal or something that had nothing to do with it, then I would think that that’s not warranted and that person should be stopped and told that there is an audience participation at the end. Come and speak then.
Thank you.
Amanda, do you want to try and respond to the timeframe for committee notices?
Through the Chair. I just wanted to speak to the particular concern brought up about the Assembly Public Safety Committee. It is a scheduled meeting. It is the third Wednesday of every month. It’s scheduled on the Assembly calendar through December 2013. Thank you.
Welcome, Peg.
Good evening. Good evening. Delighted to be here and delighted you are all taking time to address this important issue. My name is Peg Tyleson. I’m, I live at 4780 Cambridge Way and I’ve lived in Anchorage since 1972. I have been in a number of meetings here over the years. I might, I might say that, that public hearings and public participation is the hallmark of democracy. And as some of you may know, that I spend quite a bit of time identifying where meetings are in the state and in the municipality. And I am finding it harder and harder to find information on meetings. In fact, there are times, not from the municipality, I might say. There are times, though, that I have found public notices for meetings that occurred the day or two days before. It might be because people are too busy or because there are not enough people working on an issue. I don’t know what the problem is, but it is, it is a problem and I think it’s getting worse rather than getting better. To respond to the question earlier, two things. First of all, I do look at the, at the municipal website on a regular basis, weekly as an example, as I put a calendar together. I find it very frustrating to have to, if I want to read a, an ordinance that’s coming up before the Assembly, to have to go to the Clerk’s Office. In this day and age, when it’s easy to scan things, it doesn’t take much time, it can go on the website, or at least a, a link to that ordinance should be an easy way to let people know what an ordinance is. Because what is listed in the website is very limited, very hard to understand what, what it’s all about. And to have to go down to the Clerk’s Office to get the ordinance seems to me to be unacceptable in this day and age. The other issue that was addressed earlier is the AMATS, the Park and Rec, the other commissions that go on. Again, there is no agenda. And oftentimes, there isn’t even a, a phone number for people to call, or a name for somebody to call in the municipality. So, there, the, the meetings are listed and that’s good, but there’s absolutely no information available on the calendar for the municipality as to what it’s all about. And so, there is no agenda for anybody to, to respond to. I will end my comments there and probably if I might send written comments.
Absolutely. You’ll notice at the bottom of the agenda that the, the website for written comments to be submitted to us is printed right on the agenda.
Thank you.
Which is through the Clerk’s Office. Are there any questions for Peg Tyleson?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to testify? Welcome.
Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Daniel Repasky, R-E-P-A-S-K-Y. I am President of the Anchorage Central Labor Council. I’m a lifelong Alaskan and I’m also the Assistant Business Manager for IVW Local 1547. I’m here representing myself and these all interests. Couple of concerns here that the public should have with the way the Assembly conducts its business is that this is our legislative body for our city. This is our ability as citizens to have an impact on the laws that are passed here and it should be a painless process. Every citizen should have the right to come up to this microphone and speak his or her heart out, as passionately as the man on fluoridation did, without any disrespect from the Assembly members or anybody else. It’s just our right to influence the laws of this city. It should always be positive. The members of the Assembly and the government needs to pay attention to what the public says. While I appreciate their efforts to conduct this in a fashionable manner where people have adequate time to come up in a structured, I don’t appreciate them trying to restrict it to a single instance where you can come in, sign the piece of paper, and then have to wait immeasurably timed until you get an opportunity to present your testimony. That, to me, just frustrates everybody’s efforts. I also don’t like it when I come to a meeting at 5:00 and then the Assembly breaks for lunch or dinner and they walk out while I sit here and wait to testify. I think that process has to be addressed in a manner where the public comes in, knows they’re going to get to testify, and they don’t have to sit here and wait while people have dinner. I do appreciate people have to eat. How they can reschedule their meetings is something they’re going to have to figure out. But for them to walk out while we have an audience full of people waiting to testify is, is, it’s not appreciated. If the Assembly decides it does need a sign-up sheet, it needs to have a sign-up sheet, not on demand of the Assembly, but all the time, on every time, for every single issue. The only way you can do this is if everybody understands and expects that when an ordinance is up, there’s going to be a sign-up sheet, then it’s not a surprise. It’s open, it’s transparent, and nobody comes in and goes like, “Oh, you mean I missed the sign-up period?” I also believe that if you’re going to have a sign-up, you should be able to sign up online as well. And it just means the Chairman’s going to go through his list or her list and is going to call names off the list. You’ll walk up to the microphone if you’re here. If you’re not, you missed that opportunity. That’s just the way it’ll be. But it should be online as well as in person. It should never be restricted to that single night. As long as that topic of conversation is available for the public to testify upon, meeting after meeting, then that list should continue to be available to be signed up on. Another issue that I’ve noticed in my times coming before the Assembly is that the S-1, S-2, and amended versions. It, it galls me when I come to testify on an issue, and I testify on that issue, and they already have an amended version in front of them, that I don’t have a right to testify to again unless somebody makes a determination that it’s a substantive change of that law. That, too, bothers me greatly, that I, I don’t know what the Assembly members have in front of them. They do. They need to be forthcoming and let, that the legislation that they’re presenting to the public is available to us immediately, not when they hold it back and say, “Okay, now you’re done testifying, Mr. Repasky. Um, the S-1, I’m sorry, Mr. Repasky, you testified already. You don’t get to testify again.” That is wrong. There was a, a set of questions that came out from Ms. Richardson that I got an opportunity to review that I think really is succinct and is something that your task force has to address. It’s the questions on, is this really an issue of, of magnitude that we have to have a change of law? I mean, we’ve seen this really three times in my life. Three times when the Assembly chambers have been overflowing and where the public has had to come forward and had opportunities that have been extended. One is, I will call it the equal rights issue back in 2009. The other one is the Title 21 issue and the most recent one was AL 37. Other than those three events, in my recollection, all the way back to 1970 or when I started paying attention politically, which would be the late 80s, this has not been an issue. So, are we fixing something that really needs to be fixed? It depends on who’s sitting in that, behind that microphone as Chair of the Assembly. And in my experience, it’s, it’s worked well up until recently. So, I mean, to keep all this in mind, if it’s not broke, don’t fix it. But if you’re going to fix it, make sure it’s fair, it’s transparent, it’s predictable, it’s known, and it’s widely public, that there are no surprises. When people come in here to testify, they know they’re going to get to testify and there won’t be a surprise on the agenda. That’s my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Repasky. Are there any questions? We’ll start with Carolyn.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming down. My question to you is if we have a sign-up sheet here for people to sign up in person and you have a sign-up sheet online, how do people online know when they get to come in to testify and how that timeframe would work compared to people showing up to sign up in person here? Not that I’m against one or the other in any way, shape, or form. I want your opinion as to how you think it should work.
Well, I think you’re, you’re predisposed to the assumption that the people that are coming here are coming here tonight to sign up to testify. And you’re going to put them, the people that are actually here are going to get in front of anybody who comes online unless they’re already in the audience. And what I would suggest is if you, if you open up a period of time prior to the Assembly meeting for people to sign up online, that’s simply going to be dated. People that actually show up that night to sign up are going to be in order. So, it’s just going to be timestamped. When you sign up online, you’ll have a date and time. When you come here in person, you’ll also have a time. You’ll be in line. So, that’s how I think it would work.
Okay, now, if you sign up online and you’re not here the first night, testimony continues. Should your name be recalled or should it only be called once?
I think if you’re not there that night when they call your name and you still want to testify, then it’s going to be up to you to come here in person and sign up.
But if you miss the name call the first night, then you’re out.
No, absolutely not. You, you continue to have the right to testify. You just miss your place in line.
Okay. Thank you.
Bob Churchill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for coming down. Your testimony is very interesting and intriguing and we also need to be cautioned that we shouldn’t put a million-dollar solution to a, a small pro, I get that message. However, one of the, the issues I’ve had brought up to me a number of people as they come and the first 300 testifiers are all on one side of an issue. And they said, “Could you come up with a process to balance this out which would come up with a process to balance this out, which would allow for people on different sides of the issue to be interspersed in a timeframe?" Any thoughts?
Well, shooting from the hip, I would say it's just like when you go to testify before a committee of our legislature. They don't ask the audience, "Are you pro or are you con?" They just ask you to come up and offer your testimony. And if there's 300 people that are testifying against something, as we saw recently in AO 37, where we had just a 99% of the testimony was against that ordinance, and a very few were for it, that's just the way it is. When you enact a law that's going to bring out the passion in the people, they have to deal with the outcome of that law, and that's what we saw in AO 37, that's what we saw in Title 21, and that's what we saw in the equal rights issue. You've just got to deal with it.
Yeah, thank you. It wasn't a matter of discouraging, it was just kind of trying to balance it out.
I understand. How do you balance it out?
I couldn't come up with anything snappy either, so I was hoping, thank you very much.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Repasky?
Thank you, and I appreciate your service.
We really appreciate your time. Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify? Or have a conversation with us, or give us some ideas? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Heather Ireland, and part of me is really happy that I could just walk in here tonight and say what I need to say, but the other part of me is disappointed that there's not more people that are engaged in this conversation. I came to testify in the spring, when there was an ordinance before the Assembly, and I'm trying to remember what I said at that time, but it was something to the effect of, I recognize that standing at this podium is not the most effective way of influencing our government, that really being engaged in the process early on, and communicating more personally with my Assembly members through email and phone calls works much better. But I also feel that this can be the first involvement that some people have in our representative government, and if it's something somebody feels passionate about and comes down to talk about, maybe that's the first thing that they do, and then they become involved in their community council, and then they join a committee, or they get appointed to a commission, and they have more influence, and so, if this is just the gateway into that process, I think that's a good thing, because I feel like we need more involvement from all of our citizens, and I feel like this process, regardless of what changes are made, we need to have more representation from our community, not just, no offense, Caucasian people, or a certain gender, or whatever, but age groups, and this is one way to get more people to do that. But I also feel like we have a representative government. We elect people, and sometimes they're forced with making tough decisions, but that's how the process works. Sometimes when there are these highly controversial items, I wonder, maybe it should go as a vote to the public, but that's, the citizens' initiatives, or an Assembly person can put something on the ballot versus having to sit through hours and hours of testimony, but that is a way to get perspective from the people, is to have a vote before them. On a sunny summer night, or on a cold winter night, I don't necessarily like to come down and testify, but I'd also like to think that in my infinite wisdom and savvy thoughts presented well, will change someone's mind. But in reality, I know that if an Assembly person is putting an ordinance forward that they feel passionate about, it's unlikely that what I have to say is really going to change their mind. Conversely, there are some issues where I don't want them to change their mind. I agree with what they're doing, I'm glad that they're standing their ground, and I don't want anyone to influence them, just sway them the other way. So, you know, to have to sit through hours and hours of testimony to come out with the same result in the end is maybe not the most effective and efficient use of everyone's time. So, I don't necessarily have all the answers, and thank you for trying to come up with something that is consistent, and fair, and democratic, but I know it's not easy to do that, so.
Thank you, Ms. Ireland. Aunt Jo Ellen?
Heather, how are you?
Good, thank you.
So, you mentioned, you know, contacting your Assembly members through other means. One of the things that we've discussed as a group is the notion that public testimony submitted to Assembly members is usually gone to their personal emails, and is not a publicly available document, and that often, the testimony of somebody I happen to know what you do professionally, let's say there was an issue you wanted to comment on in regard to your professional life, and it took more than three minutes, and you really feel that not only would all of the Assembly members benefit from that, but you actually have a cogent thing you would like to share with the community at large. We're talking a little bit about having a way to share public testimony amongst not only the Assembly members, but the citizens as well, because it's part of the value of, frankly, long hours of public testimony, is people learn. People learn about the issue from a variety of perspectives, and if we had a way to do online public testimony, it was like a bulletin board, where you could do public testimony that was visible to the Assembly members, as well as to the public at large, do you think that would be a valuable addition to the way, that would not supplant in-person public testimony, because I don't think we have that ability to do via the Charter, but do you think that would be a nice way to augment the way the public can interact with the Assembly and our fellow citizens?
Yeah, I think there could be a lot of value to that. In my history, I've worked for a couple of Assembly members, fortunately, more than one, so this won't identify that person, maybe, but when we would sort through email, it was like you could tally, or, you know, it was almost like, okay, yeah, I know what they're going to say, I know what that one's about, you know, and we'd just kind of skim through them and get sort of a ballpark figure. But I also feel like what those people had to say should be shared with the public at large, and it shouldn't just come down to who knows who, and who can influence who, and so, a forum where that information is public, I think, would be good, and to have a good dialogue. I worry, though, like, when I read the daily news, the articles are not sometimes as interesting as the comments that people do, and to have those be anonymous is so concerning to me that it just creates so much vitriol, that I don't think it's very helpful and efficient.
Just so that we're clear, we have all stated that we would not be considering anonymous postings on a municipal website you would have to provide, just like as you do when you testify, your name, and when you testify, often, your address is asked for as well. So, you would have to actually demonstrate you were a live human being with not, you know, AK Ski Border 12, you know, that.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Not you? I discounted Bob.
We now have a question from Bob Churchill, then Tim Potter. Bob?
Heather, thank you so much for showing up. One of the issues I've had, and I know many of us in this room have taken a lot of public testimony, is what can we do to ensure the quality of the information? Get away from the things we see so often, whether it's 4,000 postcards from a particular group all saying, "We don't like X," or "We like X." What would you offer us to increase the quality of the testimony and its value, as you alluded to earlier? Thank you.
Unfortunately, I feel like it's as good as you put into it as what you get out of it, but the, I think the level of frustration with the public may be that they don't feel like what they're saying is really being listened to, and so, that can create a problem where either you're disengaging the public, where they're like, "Why bother? They're not even listening to what I have to say," or then they become more savvy at, "Okay, so if my three minutes of public testimony isn't adequate, then I will email my Assembly member, or I will call them," or, you know, so that kind of situation evolves. But yeah, when it's like, "Okay, 400 postcards say this, or that," or that it's not really necessarily meaningful conversation, yeah, I'm not sure, but I'd have to give that one some thought. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Potter?
Thank you very much.
Tim Potter?
Hi, Heather. Couple of questions. First has to do with a topic that was brought up previously, and that had to do with the substitute motions, or ordinances, S1s, 2s, 3s, whatever, and the primary ordinance may be the one that's been noticed, it's the one that you've had a chance to read, that's the one that you come prepared to discuss with the legislative body, and then you find out that there's already been S1, S2 floating around the room, you hear it's being talked about, that there might be some substitutes, they throw them on the table. At what point do you think that there should be some allowance for the public to actually have that a certain number of days in advance, so that they can be prepared to talk about what the issues are, or may be?
I think there's already rules in place about when you can introduce something, I think, and I'm just trying to remember, you know, like, the packets are released on Friday or something, but yeah, then, you know, 4:59, you get these S versions, and there's, you know, all this email traffic right before meetings and stuff with changes, and I think it is reasonable to say, you know, there needs to be at least 24 hours where a version has to be posted online, so that people can comment on that, or so that everyone's kind of evening the playing field, at least. And I think, in this day and age, the technology exists where we can do that stuff, where people can access the information, but there needs to be time to process it, and rarely, in my opinion, rarely do decisions have to be made so quickly that you can't put it off, and obviously, there's schedule limitations, like the budget has to be dealt with at a certain time, but I know there's elections, and that's one of the factors that people consider, "We've got to push this through before the next election, because, you know, there might be turnover, and then we won't have the votes to get this done," or blah, 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 but if they're more slow and thoughtful about noticing the public, giving the public time to review materials, and allowing them to comment on it, yeah, maybe they can't squeeze it in before the April election, but at least there would be meaningful conversation and dialogue about the topic at hand, where people were making educated comments after reviewing information.
Well, over the years, I've had multiple experiences where there's been multiple substitutes, and been asked the question, because I came prepared to talk about either the primary ordinance, or the S1 version, and then S2 or S3 show up, and I'm asked which one I'm testifying on, and it's something that I haven't even seen, and I'm not quite sure exactly how to respond. I've already started my testimony, it's a very difficult situation to put the public in. A second question has to do with this room itself, and this is where our Assembly, except on subcommittees and that, meets and holds their public hearings. Is this an appropriate room? Is it a friendly room? Could this room be any better to facilitate a good interface between the public and its legislative body?
You know, I think that's, to some degree, a personal comfort level, like, I know at least, logistically, it's hard for me to stand there and see everyone, but I'm comfortable making eye contact with people, whereas some people are comfortable hiding and just looking down at their notes. But I know when we were here, I don't remember when it was, in the springtime, when they had the ordinance before them to change, limit public testimony, or whatever, not AO 37, but that other thing, I was thinking that it's almost like you want to have next-on-deck seats lined up, so that the public doesn't have to just stand there and wait in line, especially because it's kind of sloped, and kind of uncomfortable to just stand there, and then the cameras, I don't know if they're on tonight, but I always, like, position myself so that I'm not sitting in front of the camera, but when you're standing in line, you're kind of stuck that way. So, I think more could be done to accommodate people, to make it more comfortable and easy for that process, but yeah, I guess it's maybe not the greatest space, but it's the space we have. I'd say more frustrating than the space is that I hate it when they get up and walk out, or the mayor's not there listening to what you have to say. That's frustrating, but that's sort of the nature of the game.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Ireland.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to share with us? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Melissa Green, M-E-L-I-S-S-A, and Green, just like the color. And first, I want to thank all of you for serving on this commission. I think it's really important, as showing the priority, that the city, this municipality should have on giving more than just lip service to serving the people. I spent pretty much every Tuesday during the summer of 2009 in this room, during the AO 64 thing, some Wednesdays as well, and then I was here quite a bit again last year after the completely bollixed 2012 municipal election. And one thing that I really noticed about the public testimony situation is how completely arbitrary it was. In 2009, we had an Assembly Chair who knowingly gave lots and lots of public testimony time to people who knowingly had been bussed, or car-pooled, or whatever, from outside the municipality to testify against AO 64. And, you know, the question came up, but didn't seem to concern the Assembly any, why are people who are not citizens of the municipality of Anchorage making their opinions known to the Assembly, and being heard by the Assembly, on questions that had to do with fundamental rights, whether or not they should be granted to municipal citizens? Then, last year after the election, the completely bollixed election, there was no opportunity whatsoever at all given for the public to testify about how they had been, about how some of them had been disenfranchised. Yes, they were going out and sending questionnaires, asking people to call them up, but none of that was within the Assembly, except at the very end of Assembly meetings, which would be like 10:30, 11:00 at night, I can't remember exactly when Assembly meetings end, but they'd have to wait all the way to the end of the meeting in order to testify at all. And the entire sense of it was, we don't care what you have to say about what a mess the election was, and it took me and nine other citizens, putting our own money forth, to bring the recount, and we could only afford 15 precincts being recounted. We only had, what, nine working days in order to even be able to make that application and raise the money for it. It just felt like, whoa, we don't really care, we're a democracy, but we don't really care to hear from you, and we had to really make an effort to be heard. Now, one could speculate, I know that I have, about the political decision-making behind these arbitrary decisions, but I think the biggest point is, none of us should have to speculate, because there should not be this arbitrariness. The, how public testimony is handled should be consistent. It should follow according to, you know, consistent rules or understandings that all of us share, the Assembly, the Assembly Chair, the mayor, and all the citizens of the municipality, and all the citizens of places other than the municipality, who should understand that this is a sovereign government for the people who actually live here, not for people in Palmer, or Wassila, et cetera. Just a few comments, some notes that I took about other things that have, questions that have been asked. There was a gentleman earlier who was mentioning how, you know, we come into an Assembly meeting at 5:00, which is really difficult for a lot of people to make, given that a lot of us work until 5:00. Now, we'd like to have our dinners, too, and then we show up here at 5:00, and the Assembly does adjourn to take dinner. Why doesn't the Assembly meet at 6:00 instead, take time for their dinner ahead of time, and then let us get our dinners as well? I see that my time's up, so.
Thank you for your testimony. Do you have any other comments you'd like to add?
Well, I also wanted to say that I think that a message board is a great idea, and particularly given that it won't be an anonymous message board, and that I wish that the muni would also take advantage of other social media things like Facebook and mail lists that people could sign on saying, yes, I want to, I want to get notice of this or that type of, you know, notification of these types of, you know, whatever people are doing ordinances on, so.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Are there any questions? Yes, Carolyn, then Bob.
Hi, Mel, thanks. One quick question for you, because we've all discussed this, it's been batted around. What do you say for people who say, I want to testify, but I work in Anchorage, I don't live here? Do they have any say at any point in time if they just work here but don't live here, or is it strictly, should be only for the residents who vote and live in Anchorage?
Well, I think that, you know, there, I think, I think there's reasonable accommodation that could be made in such situations, but I think that there needs to be some sort of standard set about that, because, you know, someone coming in and saying, well, the ordinance in 2009 was about whether or not certain portions of the population would be covered by non-discrimination laws. And here's people outside the municipality coming saying, well, they should be discriminated against. We shouldn't let those people not be discriminated against, when they're not the employers, they're not, they're not the householders, the landlords in this city. So, but I can see where there's some other issues in which, you know, I don't completely know the answer to that, other than this is a city that is supposed to be for the citizens of the city, so.
Thank you. And we have Bob Churchill, and then Tim Potter.
Just a slight variation on that. How about those folks that either own businesses, run nonprofits, but may not live in the muni? How would you feel about their testifying?
I think there are venues for them to make their opinions known, but I think that it's important to realize that, you know, okay, well, here's, here's an analogy that I used back at the time. If, if I live in Mexico and I own property in the United States, I still don't have a franchise in the United States, even if laws made in the United States may affect how I can do business in the United States.
Mr. Potter?
I'd like to follow up on kind of who can testify. It's one of those slippery slope areas that I'd really like everybody that's here and is watching on TV tonight and can think about it prior to our meeting in October, to consider, you know, at what point do you draw the line? Should the chairman ask initially, or should one of the protocols to testify be that you give your name and you give your residence address, or identify whether or not you're a voter within Anchorage, the city limit? There's a lot of people that don't live in Anchorage that own businesses. They're part of the fabric of the community. And I haven't qualified what I think the answer is yet, so I'm really seeking some guidance from the public. There are a ton of absentee landlords in this city. So yes, they do own units, they do own buildings, they do own real property, but they live somewhere else, maybe even outside of Alaska, and they don't vote here. What are their rights? You know, I'm an owner of a business in town, and we pay business taxes and all kinds of things, employ a lot of people. And do we have a right to testify? I happen to live in Anchorage, so I get to, I get to speak my mind anyway, so try and, try and shut me up. But it's really a quandary at where you, where you start to cut off the ability to have public that may have a variety of different interests. So we'd really like some help with that, because we have talked about it as a committee.
I don't know if this is, if this is the complete answer, but one thing that I do know about people who don't live in the municipality of Anchorage is that they still have the ability to send snail mail, email, et cetera, to the people who form public policy here in Anchorage. But if we are right here in this physical Assembly Chamber, taking public testimony from supposedly citizens, why are we granting people who are not citizens here time to take up that, to take up everybody's time when they, when they don't live here? And again, they are not, they are not, they're, they're like Mexican landlords, trying to say that they have a right to have something to say about how American laws are made. It doesn't make sense, any more than we should be going into Mexico and trying to tell them what their law should be.
Yeah, I appreciate your thoughts on that one. And please give it some more thought and shoot us back an email or come in October.
I do thank you all again for your service and for thinking through this, because I know that they're not easy, all of them, easy answers. I know that they're not. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Green. Would anyone else like to testify? Hello, Ron.
Good evening. My name is Ronald Leva, and I have several issues to bring up. Number one is that little timer, you should change that to a clock, so the speaker can realize when their time's running out, rather than just have it change color. That would be helpful. And then, hey, gong them. When it's over, don't hit the little buzzer, just, hey, time's up, and hit the chair. You didn't condense what you said? It's over. Because they go on and on and on with verbal diarrhea and don't make their point. Don't give anyone an advantage. No disrespect, I'm a senior citizen, but especially senior citizens. And then, basically, you know, a nice PowerPoint, we're not allowed props or, or different things, and sometimes I think the message should be with a prop. I've been known to bring in 400 liquor bottles. I think that's a message with a bottle, not a message in a bottle. So I think some sort of, you know, guided demonstration with a prop should be permissible. And then unfortunately, most testimony I listen to, you know, the Assembly, you can't confuse their head with facts, because their minds are already made up. And that's a big disappointment. So there's definitely screening, and I'm sure some of you heard some testimony that so far out there, you would think drug screening would be appropriate, because it seems so far-fetched, their testimony, whether it be fluoride or, or just other issues. So you really tolerate a lot, and people are in a hurry. You're doing it free, I'm here trying to improve the system. Which brings me to a near and dear topic to my heart, to my family, to my business, is planning and zoning. Planning and zoning, if you put anything on the consent agenda item, it's no public testimony. And then they rely on the community council's input. And this is really slighted. If anything restricts freedom of speech, is when you can't testify. And especially with a conditional use, because that's granted by planning and zoning, approved by the Assembly. And the whole purpose of a conditional use, and I'm quoting the chairman, past chairman of the planning and zoning, is to grant a use not normally allowed in a particular use district with certain conditions that will make it an acceptable use to the surrounding neighborhood. Now, unfortunately, they put a homeless shelter in a heavy industrial area and had conditions placed on it. But the worst part about it is, three of them included one, they had to come up with a report every two years of the negative impact. The second thing was a concern over the pedestrian traffic. And then the third thing was picking up garbage. Now, as an example, they were supposed to join a memorandum of understanding, but again, Chairman Jones years ago noted that at the end of the day, if it appears there may be need to some adjustment or other conditions, it is her belief that it'd be appropriate for the commission to do that. But if there's no public hearing, you only hear one side of the issue. And that's not fair to the people being negatively impacted. The pedestrian crossings with the change of evidence of increased traffic, there's no way for a person to say, hey, look, this is a truck route, and the traffic's getting heavier. And then the third thing is, look, they're not picking up the trash, it's actually growing. But the flowery report by the person who has the conditional use, they don't want it restricted, they don't want the population to go down, or their use that they have conditionally, it's all one-sided. So for public testimony, you can't talk. I mean, you would never hear that I sued them and won. You'd never hear them that they had their executive director charged with theft. You would never hear unless the media produced the fecal material on their lot, the crime is at, police calls and fire calls is 959. You wouldn't hear that evidence, because you're unable to present it in a public hearing. So that has to be adjusted, if you want true dialogue and true public input. Or else, hey, it's all one-sided, it's a done deal.
Thank you, Mr. Leva. Are there any questions? Tim Potter? By the way, I want to mention that Annie Holman joined us, who had also a member of our Citizens Task Force, and we're glad you're here. Mr. Potter?
Mr. Leva, I appreciate you coming tonight, and you're looking quite trim. Thank you. You're setting the bar pretty high for me.
Thanks to you and your guidance with diabetes.
So we, we, we have an interesting relationship, Mr. Leva and I. We've been on the other side of the, the cases a couple of times, but we're still very good friends, and I respect his opinion very much, because he thinks very deeply about those things that are important to him and the community. The question, knowing that I also represent a lot of projects in front of P&amp;Z and the Assembly and other boards and commissions, should it be that there just is no consent agenda item, there are no minor modifications, everything has to go back through a public hearing? Or should there be the opportunity for the public to have noticed that there's going to be an item on a consent agenda, and then have the allowance at the start of the consent agenda items at P&amp;Z, for any members of the public that have an issue, to stand up and address the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that they get a consideration that they have the ability to take it from a consent agenda item and make it a public hearing, and then have it noticed?
It's a long question, Mr. Potter, but specifically related to our opposing positions, especially with Carlik Manor, those minor modifications were actually major. They reduced the number of feet from a school and a playground, and they also changed the fire code, which the captain of the fire department didn't approve. And even then, they didn't get the public input, even what I feel is from the departments. But everything on the consent agenda item should be open to a public hearing. I wouldn't leave it up to the commission to decide, because they can say they heard it once, but in these cases, substantial evidence over time has been produced where the public has to be heard. Because if it swayed a judge, it should surely sway the commission, and it's being buried as a consent agenda item.
I guess in response to that, first, I'd like you to clarify whether or not it was Carlik Manor that had the 900 and some odd police or fire department calls. And I will clarify that the issue of proximity to the park and that was determined via a public hearing. That was not a consent agenda modification. And I'll bet you a good milkshake at the Lucky Wishbone on that one.
If it was, then the notices weren't sent out. And I think public notices, such as the green cards, or whatever color they are, the yellow flyers, you know, should notify people who protested that project. And as a side note, I can't believe the city would put on a DWI and get volunteers watching drivers when they put end-stage chronic inebriates between the most trafficked routes in the city, that if an inebriate walks out and a driver swerves and kills two girls, whose fault was that? The person who swerved, or a drunk who, according to Julie O'Malley, challenged the semi when she went down with two police. You know, the definition of insanity is trying the same thing over and over and getting the same results. That was a bad one, Mr. Potter.
Enough about the details on that specific item, we're here for the public process. So I guess it's very clear from your standpoint, you would advise or give a recommendation that, that any item has to go through a public process.
Any item on that consent agenda, because I don't trust planning and zoning whatsoever. And I think it's the public's right to be heard. And little digressions like that are important pieces of data that would change public opinion as the traffic increases and those inebriates step out into the street, the first innocent person to get killed, this city's going to get sued. They made a mistake. They panicked morally and made bad public policy. And that's what we're trying to correct before someone gets killed. And the harm done by the Brother Francis Shelter in Beans is tremendous. It's coming back to haunt us, and there's no way to appear and present the evidence, because it's one-sided by the social service agency, who has a moral veil, and no one can challenge them.
Well, Mr. Leva, there's two things that you can do. One would be go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a person to be heard, and public participation, raise the issue with them, and they may or may not take it up. The other thing to do would be to come in front of the Assembly, clearly, as your legislative representatives, and ask them to look into it.
And as you well know, Mr. Potter, I have appeared before every commission, from the Assembly to the Hand Commission, to the Fairview Community Council, till finally it took litigation to open their eyes, and even at that, they didn't respond to the negative impacts, the crosswalk, or even the garbage. So we need that public testimony, and specifically related to consent agenda items, or you're gagging us. You just stifled us, and I feel my constitutional rights to appear, when I'm not allowed to, on an issue that is important as this, hey, what's the sense of having any of this happen? Because you've buried it through procedural allocation of that's a consent agenda item.
Thank you. Are there any other?
I just had one more thing to say, and Ron, I appreciate you coming tonight, because I always love listening to your well-thought-out arguments, and I do respect your position on a lot of things. If you could give some real thought over the coming month before our October meeting about other items, directly or indirectly, associated with the consent agenda, and you're gagging, as you so to speak, if you can get that to us via email, or I'll come down and pick it up.
Well, thank you, Mr. Potter. This is the thickness of my, you can request a public appearance yourself to the issue, but then it's only me. It should be the entire general public. If you request a three-minute appearance request, in the case of planning and zoning, I think they're going to law me five.
Well, if you can get your thoughts down on paper, we'd all appreciate anything that you can give to us.
All right.
Thank you. There's a question from Joelle Hall.
Thank you very much for coming out, Mr. Leva. I want to go back to what you said a little earlier, and it was, their minds are already made up. And this is something that is a notion that I have, that the very process by which ordinances, resolutions, and things that are brought before this body, is they are brought before this body in a is they are brought before this body in a complete... Theoretically, in the mind's eye of the Assembly and the way they create this, they are complete. They are not a document to be worked on as with... Because otherwise, you have this S1, S2 amended version. And I think this notion that the documents that they create are somehow complete lends to this idea that their minds are already made up. Whereas if you have another kind of body where you have a committee process where you're engaging with the public and your co-conspirators or your coworkers about how will this work in actuality or not? You know, kind of the version of the committee structure you have maybe in a body like Juno versus a structure like this where there's no committee structure. It pops out of someone's head onto paper, and now we're going to have a conversation about it. They may or may not have done any research before it got to us. I think it leads to this idea of having their mind already made up because they're forced to create a fully, what they view as a fully-created project, and then have to defend it. And I'm wondering what you think about that? Because I really value, in Juno, I value the committee process, which crafts as something moves through a process. We have multiple input, and it's designed to be a work in progress. The way we do ordinances in this municipality, they are not designed to be works in progress. Do you think that leads to this notion that their minds are already made up?
Well, I think they always have their study group or focus groups ahead of time. And they do do a lot of negotiating and form some sort of concrete idea what's going to be presented. But everyone here on this panel who I changed their minds tonight, don't raise your hand. Voila. There it is. So it's unanimous. And that's what's important, is my presentation. And every now and then, politicians unfortunately are spending 74% of their time getting re-elected. And it's a tough decision. But as far as their homework and if we could get to the committees, it'd be great. But again, it's very time-consuming. And the wheels of justice move slow. Governments sometimes can speed up because of that. But in certain issues, I feel it's good. And then some issues, I think we can slow down and change people's minds on what really are good government and good ordinances. So I don't have a real clear focused answer, but I try.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Aliva. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Now, you could screen everyone out there who disagrees with me, and don't let them speak.
Thank you, Ron. In case there are people in the audience who are not familiar with the term consent agenda, both the Assembly and the Planning and Zoning Commission post an agenda. And the things that they don't think are controversial are called the consent agenda. And it's one, by one motion, all of those things are before the body. So the issue that you pose about consent agenda is a variable that's really important in the consideration of the public process. And we are grateful. Thank you. Go ahead.
Just for clarification, I think it's important to mention that all items that are ordinances do appear before the body as a public hearing item.
Thank you very much for that clarification correction. But consent agenda items are not discussed in public. There's not a public... You don't get a chance... The public doesn't get a chance to comment. And so what I do think is important is there are considerations of should we create a process whereby people can request that they are available for public hearing? With that, does anybody else want to testify? Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair, and members of this Citizens Task Force. Thank you so much for all the time that you're putting into this. This is not to be critical of you personally, but I think it may be indicative of what you're trying to address. And as a president, third-year president of a community council, a very active one... Sorry, I'm Kathy Gleason, President of Turnigan Community Council, speaking for myself, however. I didn't get any kind of invitation to participate in this task force as mandated by AR number 2013-146, where it says in Section 2 that a broad spectrum of interests, et cetera, and these are invited to participate in this task force. And it lists community councils. But I didn't get a notice about the formation of this task force. And it wasn't until a press release and so forth was put out about the actual hearings. And then I see that you've already met three times without any public notice that I know of in terms of councils. That's regrettable, but it's just indicative of the bigger picture of problems with public notice. I don't know if you're trying to limit your scope to just Assembly ordinances and hearings or if you're broadening it out to P&amp;Z Commissions, UDC committees that are formed by the Assembly that meet. So I need a little help and guidance with that because I would have a lot to say with non-Assembly hearings and ordinances. But regardless, thank you. And I got this notice, and I'm here, and I appreciate you wanting input. And the question sent out on Cheryl Richardson's email, I thought, well, this will give me some good basis to start because I haven't put a lot of time into thinking about this. But I think this is a problem that doesn't need fixing for the most part. And so I concur with the person who indicated that. You know, I've lived here 31 years. I've been active in participating at this level. I've stood before this podium many, many times over the years. There's not a problem. I don't feel like I need to have to sign up 99.9% of the time when there's a hearing scheduled in front of the Assembly. I don't think it should be required moving forward. Certainly, there have been occasions where you get tons of people lined up. Maybe make an exception, but only for those times. I think a sign-up sheet ahead of time is not required, and it's not needed. Three minutes' testimony. I'd love to have five. I'd love to have 10 sometimes, but I think three minutes is a reasonable amount of time. There's no doubt, as a community council representative, I have had my Assembly reps ask me questions after my three minutes are up to allow for me to expand on points that I want to make on behalf of the council. And that's used pretty liberally by Assembly members, and I think it works well for everybody. Should the public notices process begin anew when ordinance has been changed significantly? There's been some discussion on that. I don't have any clear and cut answers, but absolutely, when there's an S version, S1, S2, S3, that significantly change what's in a proposed notice and that posted original ordinance, then there absolutely should be another hearing, another notice, another posting of that revised ordinance. Where you draw the line is going to be really difficult, though everybody's interpretation of significantly changed is going to be different. So that's a tough one that hopefully all the wisdom collectively on this committee can come up with. Assembly Reader Board allowed to have citizens know the status of all agenda items. You know, I'm not sure about that. That sounds great. I have a pet peeve with regard to the televised of the Assembly meetings that if it's a full agenda, and I want to make sure I'm here for an item that probably won't come up until quite late in the evening. And I don't want to come here at 5:00 and sit through, you know, potentially two hours before my agenda item comes up. I used to be able to monitor it on TV, on the Muni channel. And at the bottom of the screen, they'd say what ordinance was being... Was at that time being discussed. And that has been removed the last few years. And it drives me nuts because I may be doing something else and not want to listen to the televised meeting, but be able to glance and know I've got the agenda. I printed it out in front of me. And there's still four agenda items before they're going to get to mine, so I know I don't have to hop in the car right away. Obviously, I still have more, but that's up to you whether you want to hear anymore. Thank you.
Ms. Gleason, would you like to summarize your points? Cheryl, go ahead and ask the question.
Oh, thank you. Well, I'll try and be quick here. When and how should the Assembly continue a public testimony? And should that be codified? I think that when the Assembly determines if they need to continue a public hearing, either because they didn't get to it, all of the people that were here to testify before the 11:00 or 12:00 witching hour, obviously, they need to continue a hearing. If they've heard everybody that has wanted to testify to testify, they don't need to continue it. So I'm not sure... I would think that's codified now, but if it's not, it certainly should be. A hearing should be continued if there are still people wanting to testify but haven't been able to do so at the end of an Assembly meeting. And that's a tough one on which element should be Muni code and what should be policy. Obviously, the attempt here is to perhaps make sure that everybody is treated fairly and democracy is at its best with regard to the Assembly and public hearings and notice. I think the Chair should be given some discretion, but unfortunately, that's been to the detriment of our process, public process and democracy lately. So maybe codification is the answer. That's a difficult one. With regard to... I wanted to address somebody who asked about if I get 300 postcards. You know, is that really valid in terms of public input? I think that is. And as a council representative, I can't tell you how many times people have come up to me and said, thank you so much for following this for us. Thank you so much for reading all those documents. Thank you so much for doing this on behalf of our neighborhood and our community. Because the average person, the average resident, has a life, and they're busy. And they can't do everything that perhaps I do at my level. But if they concur with the work that the council's done, and they can send a quick email or a postcard, at least they're on record supporting or opposing whatever item may be in front of them. And I don't think they should be discounted. With regard to public notice, another one of my pet peeves is the Muni website. I don't think it's user-friendly. I think on the homepage, there should be a big giant click-on where you say... It's not just buried in little type. All public notices, all public documents up for hearings so that you can click on one thing and get to everything instead of going to the Assembly and, oh, then public notices and go back and forth. And then they list the ordinance by number, but not by its title. So you literally have to click on every ordinance to see what those ordinances are on any given night of the Assembly. Those are just a handful of things that have popped up that I think need some attention. Again, I'm not sure what your scope is and how limited it is.
Thank you, Ms. Gleason. Let's take a stab at trying to answer some of those questions. There's a task force that was set up by Assembly resolution, and there's a copy of it in the foyer. And it said, "The public process associated with the Assembly." That sounds pretty much like what they do. But they also obviously set the rules for the establishment of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the other commissions as well. So I think we are certainly in a position to be able to give them some advice about some of the challenges that people might have encountered, as Mr. Aliva suggested with planning and zoning. So I think we can certainly tell... We can recommend any number of things for them. But the meetings that we had, three meetings we had previously, were on the user-friendly notice process of the website. And it was mostly organizational in our ability to be able to set a schedule and try and... The one thing we did that was user-friendly was make sure we were not having a public hearing in the middle of the summer. So we waited until after Labor Day. Thanks. And we have representatives from different organizations. And the Federation of Community Councils suggested Bob Churchill, who is on the board. That's all I know about that. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Gleason? Bob?
Yeah, Kathy, thanks for coming down. The issue wasn't to discount when you get 100 or 500 postcards. The issue was about quality of testimony. So often, you'll have... It's valuable to know that 150 people are supporting an issue or against an issue. But so often, decision-makers, people like yourself that are really knowledgeable maybe about a subject within your community council, can you really cover that in three minutes? Well, if people ask a lot of follow-up, yeah. But if they don't, sometimes that's missed. And that was the issue. It wasn't to discount large volumes of public input. I mean, that can be great. It was just, how do we enhance, if we can, the quality of the testimony for decision-makers? So that was the issue. It wasn't to discount people writing quick notes.
Okay. Chair, if I may respond? Okay. Thanks for clarifying that, Bob. I think that if there's something that a council has input on that is significant... I know with Turnigan Community Council, we also send a comment letter to cover things that you can't possibly cover in three minutes. And I tend to refer to that comment letter and hope the Assembly or whomever I'm testifying before has read that comment letter. But with regard to quality of testimony, certainly, for those who are sitting up there, you want to hear quality testimony. But honestly, freedom of speech. If you're willing to sit up there and you're willing to participate in an open public testimony process, you're going to get all kinds of testimony, some of it higher quality than others. But that doesn't preclude every individual from being able to speak in front of the microphone and provide their input.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Can you seek in here my phone so that they can hear you in television? Oh, and then you push it, and it'll bring my...
I'd just like to clarify that the meeting schedule for this group is... Should be outside in the pockets, outside of this chamber. So the meeting schedule is available at this time.
Yeah, and I did get that via email and appreciate it. But that's when I saw that you'd already met three times and didn't get that ahead of time. So I'm not sure what the notification process to get people engaged in this process was. Like I said, community councils presumably were supposed to be invited to participate, but as a council president, I didn't get any kind of invitation at all. And I don't know if other council representatives did or not.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Carolyn?
Hi, Kathy. Just a quick question. If you have time, and I know your schedule is insane, but you said you had some comments on issues with planning and zoning in other commissions. If you wouldn't mind submitting a highlight thoughts of that in writing, that would be really nice to sit down and look at.
I will attempt to do so, yes. My schedule is pretty booked right now. And that's why I decided to set aside this evening to be able to give my input. But I'll make an effort. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Appreciate it.
Cheryl, again, I was just curious what kind of notice was given to the public about the meetings that we have held.
Through the Chair, all meetings have been posted on the municipal website that this committee has held so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Tim Potter?
Kathy, thanks for coming tonight. Spoke on the Chairman and their role at a public hearing, especially the Assembly. And not to say anything of your age, but you've been around quite as long as me. But...
Almost.
And you weathered better than me. The dynamics of an Assembly and the way that a meeting especially goes is in large part a product of the Chair. And over the years, some Chairs have been very effective and some Chairs have not been very effective in running meetings or showing biases or whatever it may be. Should there be some basic standards as at least a bottom line for how the Assembly Chair is going to handle the basic parts of the meeting? And then, you know, it may not need to be codified, but should there be a standard in policy or something that says, these are the minimum things the Chair is going to do? And should the Chair have some discretion? My thought... My thought is, yes. Should there be some guidelines on that discretion? I'd like your thoughts.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with you completely on that. I mean, discretion is good. I'm a Chair myself. I would hate to be told our meetings have to be run X, Y, and Z, and I have no leeway whatsoever. But, yeah, I think there should be baseline. And it could be beneficial to the Chair, any given Chair of the Assembly as well, because those circumstances, when you have an extraordinary unconventional kind of ordinance proposed, reaction by the public, testimony demand, it would be good for any given Chair to be able to refer to that rather than just kind of make decisions off the cuff to arbitrarily cut off testimony or anything else. So I do agree there should be some baseline.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other questions, comments? Would anyone else like to testify or share their thoughts with us tonight? Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Jolinda McMillan, and I only have two points to go over. I feel like there should not be an age limit as to who can speak about an issue. In 2009, I had a statement that I would have liked to address. However, because I did not meet the age requirement, I was not allowed to speak. And so I had to have my mom help me and have her speak for me. And so I feel like if somebody has something to say, they should be able to say it. And then the other thing is, is a more online kind of thing where you can say something because this day and age is going technology-wise. And so I feel like if you guys had somewhere online that somebody could say something, then that would be a really nice thing as well. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Cheryl?
I am surprised that, I didn't realize we had an age limit for testimony in the municipality. Does, can anyone clarify that?
Do you know? I know nothing.
I have, I've actually asked, just to let you know, I've actually asked Assembly members because I, as a, before I, and stuff, it affects everybody, if you drink the water, you should have a say. And I've actually asked that, I said specifically to Mr. Honeman, if I had a five-year-old kid came in here who was articulate enough to read a statement, would they be able to qualify or be able to speak? And he told me correctly, yes. And I specifically said five-years-old when I did say it. Just throwing that out.
Mr. Potter?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to ask the Clerk, because it's an important thing for us to know. I have, I have never seen, in the 32 years I've been doing this here in front of the Assembly in Anchorage, anyone be told that they couldn't speak because they weren't of some age.
Apparently, it happened to her. Who told?
Yeah, and I would, I would like to know what the issue was, when it was, and that, because if there is something hidden in policy or code or something, I would certainly like to correct it as part of this disaction.
Hi, I'm Shawna McMillan. I'm Jolinda's mother. We were here to testify for the equal rights ordinance. And when the sign-up was being circulated, there was a gentleman that had the petition, or the sign-up sheet to make testimony. And Jolinda approached the gentleman and asked, "Could she please sign up to testify?" And she was told at that point, "No," because she was under the age of 18, she would not be allowed to testify.
Through the Chair. My name is Amanda Moser, and I work in the Clerk's office. I have been in the Clerk's office since 2010. So I apologize, I was not there in 2009, and I am not aware that there is any age requirements. I have attended Assembly meetings since I joined the Clerk's office in 2010, and I have seen people under the age of 18 testify. So I apologize that that happened in 2009, and I can speak to now. I do not believe that there is an age requirement, but I do think that it's something that our body can look into. Thank you.
We will have a comment from Bob Churchill?
Yeah. I am really sorry that happened. Would you be comfortable giving us some contact information so after our research, we could get back to you? The other thing, I also chair the Equal Rights Commission, and if you're going to be around, I'll give you some contact information.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Joelle?
So, the, now I've lost what I was going to say. I hate it when that happens. I know that, well, one of the things we've been discussing in this process is to have a set of instructions on the top of the agenda about how to testify, how to read, how to read the agenda, some basic instructions. It might be beneficial because it is fairly clear to me that the person who told you no was not a representative of the municipality of Anchorage. It was somebody, because the municipality of Anchorage doesn't actually control these large crowds. I know from experience on AO 37, that is not, you know, the people who are involved in the process and controlling the crowd. So this was somebody who had a stake in the game on one side or the other, who told you you couldn't. I think it's really important that we list on the agenda who's allowed to testify. And if we're going to make decisions about whether they are in the municipality or not, inside the municipality, that's come up tonight. But I think it's pretty clear that we need to say that a person of any age can testify for the Assembly, because if we're having people who are intervening, you need to know what your rights are. And how do we communicate those rights to the citizens when they come to testify? You put it on the piece of paper that they get handed at the door. So I think that's one of the ways we could remedy that.
I would absolutely echo that.
We have a comment from Andy Holman, and then Carolyn.
And I would reinforce what Joelle said. I think it's respectful to the public that the rules be published, because one of the, one of the things that caused us to question the system was the uncertainty in the run-up to AO 37. We didn't know which night there was going to be public testimony. We didn't know if there were additional nights. And it has a chilling effect. It's very hard. You know, you're approaching to speak and someone tells you, "No, you can't do that." That's a huge hurdle for someone from the public to overcome. I'm usually in the spot that you're in, and I've done it a number of times, and it's still nerve-wracking. You're still not sure if you're supposed to be there. And anything that's a speed bump is detrimental. I'll say also, from sitting in on Anchorage School District meetings, I don't think there is a bottom age limit. I've seen elementary school kids testify at official meetings, and the input's welcome and often quite enlightening. So thank you for trying to speak then. Thank you for coming back and looking out the issue. It shouldn't have ever happened.
And Carolyn?
Yeah, Jolinda, thank you very much for coming. One quick question. The person taking sign-up on paper, were they sitting over here or was it somebody walking around within the crowd?
There was somebody outside the door taking names as we came in.
Okay, yeah, that definitely does not sound like anything that was a member of the Assembly or the Clerk's office by any stretch. So if we're going to do a sign-up sheet, then the Assembly or the Clerk's office or whoever sits over there should control that sign-up sheet, that it should never be left in the public's hands for that reason.
I'm trustworthy a lot.
Yeah.
Tim Potter?
Thank you.
Like everybody else up here, I definitely want to apologize that you were, you were at least given the impression that you couldn't speak because of your age. And I guess I'd encourage you to maybe thinking about running for the Assembly.
Excellent. Thank you very much for coming in. Thank you for advising us that miscarriage of justice occurred, and we are grateful for your returning to tell us to make sure that we take care of that issue. Thank you.
And for making sure that the government you're about to inherit is the one that will work for you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify? Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members of this Citizen Task Force. And I wanted to thank again Mr. Steele for being one of the only Assembly members here listening to this discussion. I don't know about running for Assembly is necessarily a good thing all the time. No, I'm just joking. My name's Nick Mo. Some may recognize me as the write-in candidate this last spring who chose to run the race because of the public testimony issue. And it's something that, you know, I'm obviously very passionate about. It's something that I spent most of my career doing, encouraging public participation, encouraging my peers to get involved in, in their government. I want to just mention a couple of things. I want to thank Cheryl for sending those lists of questions. That was very helpful. That's how I heard about this meeting. But I'm going to list a couple of things that I think might help the public process, as well as mention some, again, technological things that might be of assistance as well. You know, when you have a lot of people testifying and actively wanting to give their voice to an issue, I don't think it's a bad thing. I think it's actually, you know, a good thing to have people actually paying attention to their city government. And it's funny that, you know, the same officials and many folks criticize, including me, I criticize the lack of public participation in our elections and in public testimony and in other areas of the city government. But when you do have a lot of participation, all of a sudden, it's like kind of a bad thing? I don't think it's a problem. I think that the listening side of things is what the problem is. And that's one of the things I want to talk about. You know, in, I wrote notes all over this paper, but I'll, I'll talk about the notification first. So when, you know, meetings are notified or a public notice is given, Amanda just mentioned that it's on the website. You know, there's tools to know exactly how many people view that website or click on the website. I would guess that not many people look in the, you know, the dark hidden corners of the city website for a lot of this information. So if we want to play a better role in reaching people, then we need to look at other means. In today's day and age, 60% of our conversations happen electronically through text, email, social media. Out of that, those electronic conversations, like 80% or more happen on Facebook. So I would suggest that that is one tool right there that would be low-cost for the city, is to put their notifications on a Facebook page. Those members of the public who want to receive those notifications would opt in and like the page. And it would be a low-cost tool for the public to be, you know, notified about issues. And for those who think that, you know, Facebook is only for young people, I know most of you are all on Facebook, and I know that the average age of Facebook users right now is around 36 years old. So, and the most, the fastest-growing demographic is over, graphic is over 65. So that's simply not the case. Those are where the conversations are happening, and those are where you need to meet people. And I think the city needs to do the same. When we have instances of big amount, large amounts of turnout for people, I think that the Assembly should listen to every single person. I don't think anybody should be turned away. And if that means working a weekend for the Assembly to have a public hearing on a weekend and have, you know, a couple of full days of hearings, I think so be it. When I have a high workload, I have to work weekends. I think the Assembly should do the same. They get paid better than I do. I also think that, you know, when people really give up their time to speak in person, you know, out of their busy days, it's very important that the Assembly listen to them as well. There's no guarantee, and I've actually heard this from Assembly members, there's no guarantee that all the emails will be read or all the phone calls will be responded to that are received by them. One of the only ways that you can really ensure that is through face-to-face conversations like we're having now. And if that's the case, then, you know, you need to be extra diligent to hear those, those voices who want to speak. One thing about getting the public to participate that I wanted to mention is something about issue selection. I think that if you want more young people to participate or a certain demographic to participate, you need to, the Assembly needs to address or actively listen to those issues. And if you want young people to do that, I would suspect issues of education, affordable housing, you know, early, you know, good, high-paying jobs at entry level would be issues that would gather interest from, you know, certain demographics that might want to participate or have their voice heard. I think that a lot of those folks don't get a chance to participate because they think that a lot of these issues simply aren't applicable to them. I think that's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mo. Are there questions for Mr. Mo? Joelle?
Nick, did you have anything else you wanted to just finish up with?
There's just one thing, actually, that you mentioned about the structure of the Assembly. I think it's very important that, to look at the structure and see how it could change. So a stronger committee structure, I think, could be very beneficial, both to allow amendments beforehand, but also to allow public participation beforehand, so it doesn't seem like these laws are being crafted in, you know, smoke-filled rooms that nobody, you know, knows what's going to happen, as was with the case with AO 37, I think. So I think the structure would be good. I think having the Assembly be more proactive about issues, having public town hall meetings about issues that are important to the community, inviting expert testimony could be a good, a good thing to do. And I just want to also mention a piece of technology that would be very beneficial called Councilmate. And it's something that a lot of municipalities and city councils use all over the country. And it's, it's rather new, but it synthesizes a lot of the data that comes from these public notices into a format that's easily accessible and that people can interact with a lot better than just an antiquated website.
Could you repeat the name?
Yeah, it's called Councilmate. Council and then the word mate, M-A-T-E.
Well, would we appoint a yes, explain to the, you know, the, the, the?
Yeah, well, I just learned about this tool not too long ago, so I don't know all the details, but I do know that it's been very popular among people who get their information electronically and for those who want to easily search large amounts of information in the municipalities or, you know, boroughs or city councils that they're, that they're trying to get information from. So I'd be happy to get some more of those details to this committee as a possible tool that, that could help. And I also think that, you know, the thing about listening really struck me. I don't know what guarantees you guys have that the Assembly are going to actually listen to these recommendations. You know, will they actually do what they did at AO 37 and stop listening? And so I would hope that, you know, the Assembly members who do receive the recommendations actually do something about them and don't just go through the motions.
Thank you very much. We have, we have no guarantees, but we, the more public participation we have on the recommendations going forward, the greater the opportunity for them to be influenced by them. So you can come back again on October 6th and add your weight to the voice of people. Thank you very much, Nick. Welcome. It's nice to see you, Kaylin.
My friends, my name is Kaylin Saxton. K-A-L-I-N Saxton. I've testified many times over the years, the last 40 years, going back to the Greater Anchorage Area Borough and the Anchorage Charter Commission. Most of the time, I testified regarding the care and education of young children, budget, staffing, resolution or ordinances.
Kaylin, can you bring the microphone? There you go. Closer, Nick, or bring it down. It moves.
Okay.
Thank you.
I often spoke for organizations and gave expert testimony on the care and education of young childrens. In the last 10 years, I've testified as an individual, giving my personal opinion on many issues that have come up, other topics. I testified on the equal rights ordinance after listing to others to testify for weeks. I testified on Title 21 revisions after participating in that process for about 20 years. And I was unable to testify for AO 37, the big public testimony that's come up in the last few years. Like Heather Ireland, I strategize where it's the best time and place to say what I want to say or write what I hope will inform Assembly members or provide testimony that may change minds. I support the idea that Joelle had about getting testimony that's come in emails, because I often go back to meetings that I was unable to attend or review testimony that's been given prior and learn a lot from what other people have shared. And it would be helpful to have all the information that's coming in. I think three minutes is enough for a concise statement of support or opposition and the time to look somebody in the eye. Anything else, you need to put in writing and take more time for ideas. When there are issues that many, many people show up for in support of or opposition to, I think it's time to slow down the process and to allow many more ways of being able to share the thoughts and feelings that people have strongly held at that time. Thank you. Thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Kaylin? Bob?
Yes, thank you for coming down. What are some of those many more ways you'd- What are some of those many more ways you'd offer to, to us as far as gathering information on a hot issue?
What Nick just talked about, about having a Facebook site for people that are comfortable doing things electronically, you can do it in the middle of the night, you can do it on the weekend, it's, it's an easy way to share some information. And there, there are other, you know, subcommittees and groups where people could go testify other than at the Assembly meeting, but it would be captured in writing and people could read it later.
Thank you. Question from Cheryl?
Yes, I had a similar question, and you mentioned slowing down the process. And I just wondered what you envision, what comes to mind when you think of that?
Allowing people the time, allowing everyone the time to speak. If there's really strongly held feelings that people are getting up and coming down here, that needs to be captured and taken in. And if it can't all happen on the night that the Assembly people are here, because there's limited time, we need to find other ways.
Yes, Carolyn?
Yes, thank you. Do you have any objections to more Assembly meetings instead of only meeting twice a month?
I have heard that suggested before. That's one option at a time when there are many, many people testifying, like the Equal Rights Ordinance that went on all summer. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come and justify or share their ideas? Thank you. Welcome. It's nice to see you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. I'm Pat Redman, and I'm here representing myself. I am really glad that you're doing this. I came unprepared. No, sort of prepared. One of the things that keeps coming up is the sign-up sheets. I don't like the sign-up sheets, only because so many times I've come to an Assembly meeting for one issue, all ready to go, did that, and got, you know, before we got to that, though, there were three other things, and I got really interested, and I had to make a comment. And if there'd been sign-up sheets, I wouldn't have done that. And I wouldn't have been able to, and because sometimes it's important, you have important information, that you've heard things, and now, wait a minute, they forgot this part. So it's important that whatever the issue is, people get to testify. All the years I've been involved in local government in Anchorage, the whole purpose is to get citizen participation. And the more difficult you make it, the more uncomfortable you make it, the less citizen participation you have. So we need to work harder, I mean, we need to make it easier instead of harder. I have a problem with the public notices. They're not easy to find, and I am not dense when it comes to the computer. But the planning department, from the planning department, I get my, the notices regularly. They pop in, it, I can look at it real quick and see if that's something I need to know and make a note of the date, put that somewhere, and then go back and refer to it. I know there's the RS feed from the city, I, but then I have, it doesn't, I don't know, maybe I don't know how to use it right, but then I get in there and there's all these meeting notices, but they're not the ones, they don't tell me anything. They just say there's a meeting. And then try to, try to find the agenda is another issue. And then to find the ordinance, now, you can find the Assembly agenda, and then you go down, and then you can find the ordinance, and then you have to go down and look at, to see what the ordinances are, and then to get all the backup material for it. It's a lot of effort. And an organization I belong to does some work with the municipal election ballot. And trying to look at those ordinances that they're going to put on the ballot is difficult to find all that information. It's there, but it just takes a lot of effort. And sometimes we can't find it all, and we have to go somewhere else. So something, somehow, we need to work out a better way of public notices. Written testimony, I think, whatever we do, we need, is to continue the opportunity for written testimony. I like the idea that Joelle about putting up the comments that other people have made, because one of the things that a lot of us do is, we've made our comments, but, and we think we know, but maybe somebody says something we hadn't even thought of that is either a really good idea or it's a really bad idea. And we want to know, we want people to know that, that there is a difference there or that we support it. Substitutes, oh, this is a pain. I really hate to come out here and testify after you've spent a lot of time putting together your material and get out here and find out there's a substitute. And a substitute is significantly different. Well, where do you start? You may have, you may, if you're speaking for an organization, you may need to go back to your organization to get approval, even to testify on it. And sometimes you can't do that if you don't have the time. The time isn't there the way it's set up now. So I, as far as I'm concerned, when there's a substitute, that's a whole nother thing, unless it's, you know, for a couple of words. Sometimes they don't need a substitute. Maybe they just need to be, be able to make amendments that night when they're doing it, after they've, after they've taken public testimony, which may even tell them what they're doing. The public testimony may be what they're going to put in the substitute anyway. So I really hate that. So you, the substitutes have been bugging me for years. Continuing public testimony, more Assembly meetings? We used to have more Assembly meetings. They used to be almost weekly. And I'm sure some of you remember, and I'm really glad we don't have them anymore, the 2:00 AM meetings. So I'm glad that's over. But maybe if they have an issue that's really requiring a lot, they can just continue it to the next time around something. Anything else?
Thank you. Joelle?
Thank you very much for coming down. I'm also too very concerned about the whole sign-up sheet process. And I was struck by something you said about making the process inviting for people to come and testify. It's already a fairly daunting experience to come here, even just, you know, to be in this room, to kind of, you know, gird yourself, to come up to the mic and testify. But the idea of needing to go through a process by which you get a right to stand before there that involves a piece of paper and standing in line and maybe you, what would the rules be, only that night, a series of nights? I also just want to say I find the whole sign-up sheet very concerning, is, I think it, it would be a deterrent to people turning out to testify. I just wanted to see if you, what you thought about the sign-up sheet?
I, I think it, to me, it would be, as a sign-up sheet, I'm not going to come out and sign up, because I don't know, you know, maybe when I get out here and I hear the testimony, I don't want to, I don't want to. But then again, or maybe I get out here and I wasn't going to speak, and now I'm sitting here, and now I want to speak, and I didn't sign up. There was something that, I know it's Kathy Gleason said about the, I used, I do this too. I watch it on TV sometimes, and I'm waiting for the issues and try and watch, and, and actually, there was Assembly Chairman one time that did this, we, earlier in the day, he said, well, I, he said that I, I said, this item's coming up, how far down do you think it'll be, and what time? He said, well, I'll give you, I'll give you a hint when it's coming up. So about, I'm getting, I'm watching the agenda at home, you know, watching what's going on, going, doing other things, and it's getting close. And I thought, I better start getting ready, because it's like four items down, and then I'm just about time I put my coat on. There's this little phrase that this Assembly Chairman said, and my husband says, I think that's your cue. You better get in the car and go. Which it was. I mean, it was going to be like two more items. That gave me time to get here. But, but it's true. They used to run across the bottom, and so you knew what item was on there. And if you watched at the beginning, you knew which ones had been pulled for, or rea, if the agendas readjusted, which they do sometimes. Now you can go in the computer, and sometimes you can tell that, that they've re-aligned the agenda. What do you call it, Amanda? You, yeah, reworded the agenda, which they do sometimes, so that you can get out, get over here. Because we don't all want to come here at 5:00, and we know that that's the consent agenda. Unless we have something on there, we don't need to be here until the public testimony starts, so.
Any other questions? Yes, Carolyn?
Hello, thank you for coming down. I understand the sign-up sheet issue can be daunting for some people and complicated. I, it's kind of a two-part question. How do you feel about a sign-up sheet that just stays open as long as the item is still on the floor and being testified to? And if you're not real comfortable with that, when you do have a large crowd, such as 64 or when we had 37, what do you suggest? Now, the unions did a phenomenal job of organizing the, the testimony for 37. So I have to give them that, but that wasn't something that was done by the municipality. So what would your suggestion be to us for when there are large crowds and people are upset, and there's a full room plus waiting out in the hallway to testify?
You know, I do think there, there is, I say I objected the sign-up sheet, but there might be a time for it. There might be, I'm trying to remember back, that, that summer that we had all, that long time, how that went. It seemed like there, there does need to be some, maybe you came and sign up, and you know it's not going to get there tonight, so you can go home and know that you're, you don't need to come back till the next week or two weeks, whenever that next public hearing is. If there could be something like that, but if there's that bigger crowd. Or if there's a way, you know, we, we, it's not good public testimony, but there is times when, all right, how many here are in favor of this ordinance? And they all stand, or they all sit, or they'll just, and, and we've done that before. I mean, it depends on the chairman. And I'm not saying that's a good way to do it, because you don't, there's, while it sounds like everybody's saying the same thing, there's always something new to hear. I mean, I mean, my husband was sitting home complaining about, well, they're all saying the same thing. And I'm saying, yes, but there's always something new. Somebody else may have another perspective that we haven't heard yet, so. So sign-up sheets in the, for big crowds might be appropriate. It's just hard to know how to cut it off.
Thank you. Joelle?
So with sign-up sheets, do you think it's fair to tell a group the night of that they're going to be subject to a sign-up sheet? Or should the group, should the group of people who are being limited to the sign-up sheet have a, have some notice? Because what you're, what, what we're saying is, the, the Assembly could arbitrarily decide, oh, I see a lot of people here, we're going to now limit only the people who are in this building.
You can never eliminate, uh...
Well, but, so I just want to be clear, that's how they've done it in the past.
Yeah, that's right.
So the question is about the sign-up sheet, it is, if you're going to do it, can you do it arbitrarily on that night? Or do you have to do it and then postpone public testimony and say, we are going to have public testimony at a later date, it'll be subject to a sign-up sheet, this is the time, so that the public has public notice?
But they've already, if, if you say it that night, and they're already here, you're gonna, you're cutting off their opportunity right then. And some people won't, even if they sign up, won't be able to come back. They've scheduled themselves to be here now, and they can't come back the next time. So I'm, something I'm going to have to think about. And that's a question I didn't ask at the beginning, and I, I know my time's up, but if we test, if we speak tonight, can we speak again?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I know.
We're having, we're having two different public hearings. Tonight is, what's, what's your point of view about the whole question? And then what we'll do is go through a deliberative process and come up with some recommendations, send those back out to you and ask you, what do you think about this version of the recommendations to go to the Assembly? So it's, you can testify in October as well, after we've chewed on it a while. Tim? And then Carolyn?
Sure. Pat, I'd like to play devil's advocate, and I'll probably hear it from some people in the audience, but if the protocol for the notice is that a public hearing is going to be held on such and such a night, then if you are a citizen that wants to testify, it's your responsibility to be there that night at the meeting and make yourself present to have your opportunity to speak. If in fact, there's a packed house at that point, then is it everybody who had the responsibility to be there that night? Is it their chance to then sign up? And that's the limit of the list, because if you wanted to speak, you were supposed to be there. Or do you structure it that if you go through a whole night's of public hearing, you don't complete, that at the next meeting, that you continue the public hearing, and then those that are there that want to speak can speak, and those that are there, if they don't finish, it will be done off of a sign-up sheet for the following meeting? I'd like to get some perspective, because I've heard some people indicate that there's just this absolute belief that if you have something to say, whether it's the night of the meeting, or maybe three or four or five nights later, that you should be able to speak. And yet, the, the person that gets there and spends the time to be there the night that it's advertised to be, I mean, you're supposed to be there if you want to testify. And it's kind of a first come, first served, and that's the way the game is. But you can sign up that night to testify, and, and, yeah, maybe somebody's not going to be able to be there the following week for a continuation of the meeting. But, you know, that's part of life as well, and they can always put in a written comment, or they can call their Assembly person. So how do you best accommodate designing a system that accommodates the public to know when they're supposed to be here, and then how it's going to be followed up on? So we don't have a repeat of, you got a crowd here, and we're just going to cut off the hearing.
You would ask that, wouldn't you? No. Because it, actually, my first reaction, and that's why I want to know, I can come back again, is that if you showed up the first night and there's a huge crowd, because we did not anticipate a big crowd, and now we have to have a sign-up sheet, then you're, it's your responsibility to just sign up to get on that, and try to get your testimony in, and hopefully you can either speak that night, or if it has to continue. But I don't think my, I, unless you announce that it's going to continue at the very beginning, this is going to, this public hearing's going to continue, if you didn't sign up the first night, why would you, you know, why would you want to sign up the second night, because that was a continuation of the first public hearing? Except the public hearing stays open. And if the public hearing's staying open, then it's, it's fair game, the way it's written now. And the other would be, there's times when we've actually set up meetings where, on the budget, there's two, there were, used to be two nights of public hearing on the municipal budget, sometimes four nights. And they announce that ahead of time. And sometimes there's a lot of people one night, and sometimes there isn't. So, you know, if you anticipate, I, I, it's something we're going to have to think about here.
Based on the budget, hardly anybody comes the first night, because they're afraid the Assembly people won't remember what they said by the time the second hearing happened. So then the mob shows up at the second hearing, and then you can't get through all the, all the people. So, you know, that's one of the annual events that, that we have. I'd really like you to think about that, you know, managing the population and the Assembly to affect the ability to, everybody that wants to be heard to be heard, acknowledging that they have a responsibility to be there that first night. So I'd really like you to think about that, because it's not...
I'll be thinking about it, and I'll be discussing it with some people.
Sure. Carolyn?
I have one more, and you're kind of getting caught in the crosshairs here, and I'm going to own that right now. But at the same time, what happens, such as when we had 37, the parking lot was full. Everything was full. People could not get in the door, the fire marshal would not allow more people in. So if you tell them that you have to sign up on the first night for testimony, it'll go on till we're done with the list, what happened to all the people that couldn't get in the door to sign up?
Well, see, that's where I'm, I'm wondering if right then, they need to decide whether or not they're going to have a second night of public hearing and announce that right on, you know, this is, if they're, if those people are all here to testify, and you can get a hand count before you even get a sign-up sheet. If that's what they're here to testify on, then you, the Assembly is going to have to make a decision then.
Carolyn, turn your mic on.
Carolyn, turn your mic on.
I'm curious, when you talk to your friends and to have the feedback come back to us, whether they think that testimony should be open-ended until the subject is closed, or whether they feel that the sign up sheet should be the first night, or two nights, or how that would be. I'm very curious. Thank you.
Mr. Potter.
You know, we've, we've chatted as a committee a little bit about, does it take a rocket scientist to figure out when the highly attended meetings are going to be? I've been doing this a long time, and I'm not a rocket scientist, but I've guessed pretty right every time. And it, you rarely get surprised as to what issue's going to bring out a crowd. And I will say that my office is very close to here. The first night of 37, I drove over here, could not find a parking space, drove back to my office and walked to the meeting. And there really were people that were turned away, because they couldn't get a place to park, or they didn't feel comfortable parking at Century 16, or in the hotel's parking lot, or somewhere else. And that was really unfortunate. So what would your suggestions be onsite and offsite to manage a crowd like that on an issue if we had 37 again? You know, there were, if, can you overflow, if you know there's going to be, or you have a good idea there's going to be a big, heavy attendance, should you make special accommodations to try and get the Weldon Marston Theater with technical equipment, so that you can project the meeting in there, so people can actually be here and feel like they're participating? And then know when, you know, when things are occurring?
That wouldn't be a bad idea, which we've done before. I've forgotten all about that, my gosh. You know, we, we're not limited to two meetings a month, and we're not limited to just this space. And we have done that, that has been done in the past, where we, I forgot about that. This is called aging, no, I'm not going to admit to that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Pat. Would anyone else like to come and share ideas with us? Welcome. John.
My name's John Aronno, A-R-O-N-N-O. So I guess I'll start off with the comment about, oh, actually, before that, through the chair, thank you all for taking this issue up, and thanks to Assemblyman Steele, and also Assemblyman Trainey, who was part of a bunch of your meetings. It's been a really fascinating discussion, and one I really thank you for having, because we need it badly. I sat next to my friend Mel over there in 2009 for the Ordinance 64 hearings all summer. So when we talk about the sign up lists and, you know, "Oh, when should we cut it off?", that doesn't really ring plausible or legitimate to me, because we've done the thing where we hear an issue to death until every person who wanted to speak has spoken. Not only have we done that, the chair at the time, Debbie Ossender, was more than accommodating, as we've learned. We went through the Anchorage residents, we went through the Matsui residents, we went through Fairbanks residents. I talked to a group who had been diverted from the airport. They were from a Colorado Baptist ministry, coming to Alaska for a week-long Bible camp, and they just brought them right to the Assembly to testify. The notion that we can just kind of arbitrarily set a deadline and say, "This is when we cut off the point where your voice matters," doesn't ring legitimate to me. I also think we're treating the Assembly as the ground level of municipal government, and Kathy Gleason alliterated to this earlier. I feel like community councils are getting really left out of the mix, and this is what Charter specifically designed as the tool to kind of serve as committees for a lot of the legislation that comes through the Assembly. For the three years in between Ordinance 64 and Ordinance 37, up through this past June, I served as a Patrick Flynn staffer on the Assembly. I watched all the meetings in between at home, so I didn't get him in trouble for doing anything. But I really feel like there is a push to skip the part where the people that are pushing, whether it's the administration, or Assembly members, or an outside group, they're skipping the part where they address the community councils. And time and time again, in Assembly meetings, when you want to see where the bar is raised to the highest for public testimony, it's the presidents of the community councils who have had all the presentations come through, and they've had a consensus of their membership. If we're going to talk about raising the time limit for anybody's testimony, I would say, since community councils are the specific tool for maximum citizen participation before it reaches the Assembly, that's where I'd go for that. Let's hear from the assemblies, and, or from the councils. And the argument against that is, well, there's a lot of community councils. Well, Ordinance 37, and Ordinance 64, and Title 21, and all these things affected a lot of people. It's worth the time, we've done it in terms of going through all that time to hear from everyone. I think it's the right way to go to air on the side of hearing every opinion. I also, I know Mr. Potter made reference in one of the meetings about the Assembly members' tendency to blink through public comment, just to, you know, look, stare in their monitors and not ask questions, and decide before the comment period is open, and not really give much open thought to the comments offered by anybody before them. I know there's no real way that you all can legislate against that in your report, but it is just kind of a sad place that we've landed in. One of the things that Assembly members have done with that public comment period is, after that the three minutes are up, they'll kind of say, "Oh, well, you know, do you want..." If it looks like it's going the way that they agree with that Assemblyman or woman's opinion, they'll let them go on and on and on for 10, 15, 20 minutes. And it's not, "Oh, do you have something relevant to add that we haven't heard before?" I have this specific question that you're an expert on, and I'd like to, it's more just, "So, tell me more about your opinion that I agree with." And I don't know if that really benefits us. And as was mentioned many times, the S version problem scares the heck out of me, as somebody that's dealt with a lot of S versions. It becomes a who's-on-first game during public testimony, where it's, you know, "I'm opposed to this provision." "Oh, well, that's in the original version, we're on S3 now. What version do you have?" "Oh, I have S2." It's impossible to follow along, and it's a good out for Assembly people to say, you know, don't hold us responsible for the legislation we're trying to push through really quickly. So if I could just make one quick comment about the push for more openness. The LCD screen that Dick Trainey was talking, Mr. Trainey was talking about, it amazes me that we have two screens that are so large and do so little. I love the idea of a website, a forum, you know, even if you limit comments, it's still going to end up looking like Reddit on some days, but it's still, it's something, it's an information base for people to go to. I think YouTube would be great. Some of the best testimony I've ever seen is more artistic, more creative. During Ordinance 64, one young woman just had a boombox and held it up, you know, to play a song that she felt spoke to her reasons for supporting equal rights. It could lively things up a little bit, which would be nice. A lot of the disconnect that's going on, a lot of the voter disenfranchisement that's been going on, the fact that one measure gets all the public testimony in the world, another one just gets shut down, translates to this, you know? Translates to the same 20 activists coming down and speaking. And we're losing a lot of people younger than me and my age, and creeping on up the chain, too. So anything you can do to increase public involvement, especially through YouTube, Skype, what Nick was talking about, council meet, awesome, and I support it, and thank you again.
Thank you very much. A question from Bob Churchill.
Yeah, do you have any further comments on public notice, the lack, lacking of, or the good points of?
You know, I have to look at it from someone who didn't work for the Assembly for three years, because I know exactly where to look. I think in terms of, one of the ideas put forth by Joelle Hall was to have the instructions on sign up sheets. I like the idea of, on the TV feed, having information maybe about upcoming ordinances, scroll through. The Facebook page is a great idea, Twitter would be a good thing. I mean, every Assembly member's on their computer anyway, though, let's not kid ourselves. Pick one of them to be the Twitter agent for the night, and tweet different public notices coming out in the future. Heck, buying an advertisement in the Anchorage Press or something like that, advertising, you know, upcoming meetings and what's on the docket. I mean, I think the sky's the limit in terms of ideas about how to market Assembly meetings, but we need a push for it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you much.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to share their ideas with us tonight? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Humphries, and I'm wearing my tourist disguise today, but I am a resident. I'd just like to start with my cool gimmicky idea, which is to have a document reader that allows placing documents here, projected up there, and to the Assembly members' monitors. Now onto the more serious parts. I don't think that limiting public testimony is generally a good idea. The reason is that free speech is very important to people in this country, and our founding father saw that we should, you know, put limits on free speech out of the hands of legislative bodies. Now, practical matters aside, that would make sense. There is sometimes some necessity to limit free speech in some ways. I don't like the list. I like being able to walk up and just speak when I feel it's appropriate, when there's a pause, whenever. I don't really like having people who are not actually working for the municipality at the time organizing the crowds. I think that's kind of intimidating. I don't like the idea that, you know, if I missed the meeting, that I wouldn't be able to show up to another public hearing and testify. But in all honesty, I do think that requiring people who wish to testify to show up at the meeting where the public hearing is noticed does make sense. Notices need to be placed in a periodical record with area-wide distribution. The Anchorage Daily News would be the obvious choice. I think that's pretty much it. I didn't really prepare a speech, but I've said most of the words that came to my mind as I was sitting there listening. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Humphrey?
Ms. Andrew.
Yes, sir.
I'm interested in hearing more about coming to the first meeting, and I was not clear about what you were saying.
Okay, well, let me put it this way. Let's say I had found out that there is going to be a large crowd showing up to the second public hearing for an ordinance. You know, I might be interested in showing up to that. Is there any strongly compelling reason as to why that should be, you know, permitted as standard procedure? No. Now, should the Assembly be permitted to, you know, reopen the list, if there is one? Of course. I mean, it would actually probably be foolish of them not to do so, but I don't think they'd be required to do so.
They should not be required to reopen.
They should not be required. However, it would be unusual for an Assembly to be approached by people wanting to speak and to turn them away.
Other questions?
Three minutes enough, in your opinion, to...
You know, that's really an interesting question. I think if someone wanted to speak for longer than three minutes, they could have some way to approach the Assembly. There are various ways they could go about that. For public testimony, as I understand it, the rule is, what, three minutes for individuals and five minutes for groups?
No, sir. Three minutes.
Three minutes, period? Okay. Now, wasn't there some rule a while back that said those who represent groups could speak for five minutes?
At the Plating Board, or Planning and Zoning Commission, or other board or commission like that. That is the case. At the Assembly, it's been three minutes for everyone.
In the past, the Assembly has allowed five minutes for groups.
It's the discretion of the chair thing that we were discussing earlier, that they have, they have not, it's three minutes in the Charter. But the chairs have some, a fair amount of discretion.
Generally speaking, I would say that there should be, you know, two-thirds majority among the Assembly to actually stop someone from speaking.
Last question. How did you hear about tonight's meeting?
I think I heard it from Daryl Hess, actually.
Andy?
I was going to say, I think your idea for document camera is outstanding. For one thing, I think it takes a lot of pressure off people that want to come testify. It's a way of preparing in advance, it's a way of speaking powerfully without having to describe something complicated, which obviously I'm having trouble with right now. Making that part of the recorded testimony, right now you're being recorded.
I know.
To become part of the process, is a simple way to include, say, images from a document camera. Could that be a permanent part of the testimony in a, in a simple way?
You'd probably want to talk to the clerk's office about that. The clerk's office.
Joa.
I wanted to ask you a question about organizations managing crowds. When we, when AO 37 was up, there was a concerted effort to manage a crowd that we knew would be there, that there's, there is currently a process in the municipality of Anchorage to manage a crowd.
There need to be processes for managing crowds, and they need to involve employees who are on duty, if they involve employees. You know, you could consider having, you know, contracted security do it. That's really an interesting issue. I would talk to the mayor about that.
So just following up on that, the, the issue of, is there isn't a list? Is dermanged with the conversation about how you manage the crowds?
I don't like the list.
Yeah, okay.
If you're going to have a list, the list definitely needs to be handled by municipal employees only. That should be handled by the clerk's, the clerk's office exclusively. I mean, you know, you really shouldn't have, you know, volunteers going around with a There really shouldn't be any sense that any one group is organizing public testimony. If there is, that's, I mean, that is intimidating. I mean, it's, you know, not, not that big of a deal, really, but it just is not the way things generally should be done. Now, with AO 37, there, you know, is municipal employees who had an issue, so the problems ran into there are probably going to be a little bit unusual, but they should have been foreseen.
By whom?
That's a really good question.
Because they were foreseen, it's just not by the right people.
You know, we elect our leaders to see things that sometimes, you know, were hard to see, and they're held accountable, whether or not they really had a fair shake.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to share with us? Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Michael Todd. I've spoke here a few times, and I only have a couple of things I wanted to note. First off, every time that I've spoke, I've had some information prepared, and I haven't even gotten halfway through the information that I would want to relay in my three-minute time. It goes really quick. I don't know how else to put it, other than just really amazing. I actually have had to check the time on video just to see if I actually got my full three minutes. It's, it's surprisingly fast, but, so if five minutes could be considered, I think that might be something to look into. Tends to be that, say, the Chairperson can allow for someone to speak a little longer if there's relevant information, but if it's not something, as someone else mentioned earlier, if it's not something that they want to hear or have an interest in, well, they're not going to allow it, and even if it is relevant to, say, some people in the audience. With that said, again, five minutes might be a good idea, because I, I see the three minutes go by just like that. One more thing that I wanted to mention, and that is, show of hands, request to the Assemblymen for members for specific questions or issues. I've seen it happen. I've attempted to follow up with a question that a friend of mine had. of mine had when I came up to speak after he was done. He was cut short because his three minutes were up and they really didn't want to hear what he had to say, or listen to his question, or answer his question, or respond to his request for a show of hands. So I followed up and was interrupted throughout my portion of speaking to make that request repeatedly and was told that that isn't something that I'm going to see anybody participate with, a show of hands with the question. Something I don't really think there's consistency on, in that I know I have more than one person that I've spoken to about this having taken place and having had participation of a show of hands with a specific question. And so, some consistency there would be good. If, I mean, if, if it's not allowable, then so be it, but if it's been performed, then it should be allowed. So, with that said, I just, I, I was a little frustrated and, and that, there should be some clarification on that. If, if there isn't going to be an allowed point where you can actually interact with the Assembly members by requesting a show of hands on something, then so be it.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Questions from Bob Churchill and then Tim Potter?
Just a clarification. Are you asking for a show of hands by the Assembly members, the crowd at large, which?
The Assembly members, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tim Potter?
Is there anything else you wanted to tell us since three minutes went by pretty fast?
Well, like I say, I really only had those two points. There's been a lot of good dialogue tonight. I think Nick Mo had some really good points. The getting a Facebook page probably a really good idea, but, you know, I mean, there's, there's so many different tools out there. I think that, that counsel aid or whatever it was he was discussing, that, that sounds like there's probably some real good potential for that, or mate, I think it was, yeah.
When you came to your first Assembly meeting, did you have a clue or what were your expectations about what was gonna happen?
Well, when I first spoke, yes. When I first attended, no. I was here with a friend and he was interested in promoting having on the municipal, the AWW water billing statements, warnings about fluoride being utilized in baby formula and how it should be warned to people that aren't aware of the fact that it's not recommended that you use fluoridated water in baby formula. And, and so I watched that whole interaction with him and the Assembly and I was a little caught off guard with how that all transpired. When I came to speak, I was...
Because part of my interest is that, that a lot of people do come out with a passion on a specific issue and it may be a small issue. For a lot of people, it may be a big, huge issue, like 37 was or 64. And would it be helpful, because I know a lot of people, public speaking is one of the worst favorite thing to, to do in your life, and this, in my opinion, is not a friendly room to the speaker at the lower podium. And besides the circular shape makes it a little bit odd as well and hard to see out at the periphery, but would it be helpful on an agenda if there was a good succinct explanation of what your expectation should be and how to go about presenting your issue to the Assembly, so that it is not a surprise or you don't have to sit here and worry about, you know, believing you've made an idiot out of yourself because you didn't know what to do when you got up to the podium?
Some kind of a cheat sheet to prepare oneself?
Basically, just, just basic expectation of what, and I don't know what people, when they come here to, to testify, I'm not sure that if they haven't been here before, I don't, I don't know that the majority knows rationally what the expectation is and how it really is gonna play out. And I think it would be helpful, and I'd like some input from you and, and other people that want to speak tonight, you know, what would make it easier or more helpful for a person coming to the hearing for the first time to the Assembly chambers to be able to testify to their legislative body?
Well, I'll be honest with you. I don't have a problem with public speaking. I actually feel very comfortable doing so and always have, but with that said, I, I actually was, one of the things I was gonna make a note of is that I really was impressed with the format and the first time that I did come and attend. The interaction with a colleague of mine and, and the Assembly members, he provided them a lot of documentation. The, the room, I mean, it's, it's nice. I, I find it pleasant. It doesn't intimidate me. But as far as some type of a format or expectations to be made, you know, I mean, I, I guess I really don't have a whole lot to add, because again, I, I felt very comfortable with the atmosphere and the routine that's in place. I was a little caught off guard, again, this, this point where I was attempting to get a show of hands, because I had heard that done before and I had seen my friend was able to do so, so I just began to pick up where he left off and was interrupted and told that's not something we're gonna do. And it, it just, I guess, yes, clarification on that would be great. Other than that, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have a whole lot to add.
When you've spoken here in front of the Assembly for whatever the issue, did you get the sense that some or most or all of them were attentive and respectful of your time that you've sat out there and waited?
Sadly, that is a good question. No, there's some of the folks at the end of the night, you can tell they're, they're really not interested in being attentive, let's say. Perhaps it's the subject matter, a group of people together, all wanting to discuss a specific topic that maybe they feel they've heard everything, they're gonna hear about it, but as someone said earlier, there's always another view. There's always something else to be said that someone else may bring up. It is worth hearing. So I think that if some of them should be attentive during the public comments portion, because you, you never know what you're gonna have presented if you're not paying attention, because it's like, no, I don't really want to be here now. It's, it's disrespectful to the public that they're here to serve. I mean, they've been, they've been elected to this position for the reason being to represent those people that are up here trying to express their concerns. And, no, I've actually sat back and shook my head at the lackadaisical facial expressions and complete disregard to some of the public comment portion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to share with us? Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for volunteering your time here. I'm not a very good presenter to the public. I don't like talking to adults very well. I never did. Didn't do very well in high school, but I think that in this process, I was cut off on several of these testimonies that have been given here to the municipality and had bearing input in local government, state government, because of being dissatisfied with the decisions that are made by the, either members of the panel or the Assembly or the state legislator or whatever.
Excuse me, sir. Can you tell us your name, please?
Oh, yeah. My name's Don Hennessy.
Thank you.
And I've, I'm a member here of the city. Speaking towards what one of the other commenters said here, I think anybody that pays taxes here in the municipality should be able to testify or be part of this process. They've got a voice. They're supposedly paying for the government. I think the three minutes is probably long enough. I think there should be other ways of submitting documentation or data or statistics or whatever that should be available to the entire public, not just the Assembly members. I've also sent email to Assembly members, sometimes with a response and sometimes without. So I would like a better response from the Assembly as well, and it may be a public forum. Somebody mentioned Facebook or some other blog type would be nice to be available for the public, the public to be able to go online and read it. Or some kind of documentation that's available. They can make copies of it or something like that and give it to the public, or they can ask for that documentation. I know that there is some kind of forum online that you can request to talk to the Assembly. I think it's fairly structured, but it's a little intimidating at first. I have one more comment. No, I've lost it. Oh, the organization of lists, especially on hot button topics, I think it's very disorderly. It should be more structured, especially for a walking person to come to and say, I think on the fourth day or something like that, I found a lady at a table out front that allowed me to sign up to get on the list, and then I was denied speaking anyway, so. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hennessy. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Carrie Clark and I did not try to come and testify before the Assembly for 64 or for Title 21. I did try to come and address the Assembly for AO-37 and unfortunately was not able to have an opportunity to do so. So this is, I appreciate the work that you're doing and trying to come up with a set of guidelines or recommendations to try to figure out how to make the process fair and consistent for everyone. I, I don't remember who said that democracy is a messy thing and, but we have, that's what we've chosen to use in this country and, and so we do need to figure out a way to allow people to speak before the Assembly. I, I looked through some of those items that were sent around to the talking points that we could address. A lot of things on there I really don't have an opinion about. A couple of things, though, I do think that a three-minute time period, at least for me, is sufficient. Gather my thoughts ahead of time and then try and match that time. I think that there can be a better way to increase the process, whether it is through allowing written testimony, doing some sort of a bulletin board, sharing the testimony through that way, as long as it is considered part of the public testimony. I think that that would, that, that is important because what the goal is, is, I understand that participation generally at most meetings is not that high from the, the public, but when there is, we don't, that's not the time when we want to shut it down. That's the time when we do want to open it up and allow all voices to be heard. I think it's real tricky when you do have something like AO-37. Mr. Potter, I think you said you, I had, you could tell that that was going to be a hot topic. And, so how do you do, how do you structure that ahead of time as the Assembly to allow that testimony? And I think that's a, a big question. Do you have a, a sign-up sheet? Do you do the online sign-up ahead of time? How can, how can the Assembly judge ahead of time? The number of people that may show up, the amount of time that's gonna be given in any evening for that testimony. I think that that may end up being, well, we're gonna have to see how many do show up and being willing to allow to have that testimony to remain open for additional nights. Now, whether or not you sign up the first night and that's your only chance, I don't know. That's, that's a tougher one, because maybe you weren't able to make it the first night, but then they schedule it for another night and, you know, guess what? That night you have open. Are you going to be disallowed to come to that night? So I don't know that you want to necessarily shut it down, but then it begs the question, well, how, how, when do we stop? Until everybody has had an opportunity to speak? Again, democracy is messy. Yes, that's probably all we have to do. Because it's, really, I think it comes down to what kind of community are we wanting to live in, be a part of, and help grow and see progress. So I think that's one of the questions that, when you start making your recommendations, that you want to also take in, into consideration. You know, and I, so when you're making your recommendations, you may end up putting things in those recommendations that may have been counter to the past practice of what people have experienced throughout the years in coming and speaking before the Assembly. But again, if you allow this opportunity to have people come and address you, make your best recommendations and get feedback on that, that's, that's what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tim Potter?
Well, since I like to play devil's advocate sometimes, I appreciate the fact that you were listening, because quite frankly, right now, I am open to any suggestions, because the issue of how to accommodate a large issue and take the public testimony and make sure that, that everyone who wanted a chance gets to speak in a, in a rational way is, is very important. I think in the committee, we're really striving for what's fair, what's consistent. We've heard that quite a bit tonight, so we, I think, share that direction. So I ask you to come back in October to see and comment on what we've tried to come up with in a draft form anyway, our ideas, but continue to think about a couple of these questions that are clearly issues that aren't easy and give us your thoughts over the next month.
I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
I appreciate your time. Would anyone else like to testify? Welcome, Steve.
Jane. My name is Steve Heimel. I live over on the other side of Arctic, up 36th. This is an excellent body for the job and so I really appreciate you people doing all this. I first started coming to Assembly meetings when I got to town, 1982, and it seemed to me then that it worked. It was after Alice's time. Jane was still on there. Later on, Jim Barnett would come and be on there. It seemed like it worked. It seemed that you would actually see the process work where people would, on the Assembly, would try to accommodate the concerns that came to them through the public testimony. I pretty well go along with what Rapaski said to start with. Seems to me he got it all nailed down, very short, very compact. Maybe what we're dealing with here is like, we need clarity, and he pointed out the clarity problem of coming at five o'clock and then they have lunch, and then they have this consent agenda thing. You never know how long it's gonna take. And then there's this part where they pin medals on people, which is fine, but I just do not sit here through it. And it's just not clear when you're gonna have a chance to speak on the thing that you came to speak on, which in my case was Title 21. So I came before Assembly meetings on Title 21. I went to two Planning and Zoning Commission meetings and there I will bring up issue that's also come up, respect. Sometimes we just didn't really get respected. I think the reason you have the public comment and all that is it's a democratic process and you want it to take place in the light of day. People come in hopes of impacting the process. If they cannot impact the process, then they come so that they can expose what they don't like about the Assembly, to put the members of the Assembly in a clumsy position to where they're a little embarrassed by the position they've taken, because the comments have come in and shown them to be a certain way. So, now we've come to a situation, this is just my observation, where some Assembly members just don't want to sit still for this. They don't want to sit there and be abused by people who are trying to expose what they don't like that they're doing. And, as was said earlier, it's a sad place that we've landed in. So you guys got some pretty hard work ahead of you and I look forward to your recommendations. I just wanted to share my observations. You know, four meetings plus committee meetings, waiting for hours and hours, and what, when I finally got a chance to speak, what could I say? I finally got a chance to speak, what could I say? You guys are not going to do, I know you're not going to do what I want, so I'm just going to tell you what you really should do. I was reduced to that. And I'm going to keep coming back and telling them what they need to do. I've got modest proposals.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm just informed that we've, our video feed has run out, so Amanda, what does that mean? And what can? She wants to make sure that all of your words of wisdom are recorded for posterity, and that we should probably take a break while we try and figure out what happened to it. Let's take a three-minute at ease while we try and figure it out. Don't go away, please, respectfully. Could the task force members please come back to order? Everybody want to come back to order? of wisdom were recorded. We just lost your handsome face for a couple of minutes.
Excitement never ends.
So, I think we had a question from Cheryl Richards.
Since I know you pay attention to a number of public issues, I wondered if you had any particular details, insights, big picture, any of this, for public notice, because it's frustrating for all of us, I think.
Yeah, I could, I can't deconstruct it real well. I, I don't like, I don't think there's good clarity in the website either. It's just hard for me to navigate. Maybe if there was a little help area there, that would help the non-tech literate people like me navigate it better. But also, what we discovered was that often when stuff gets really controversial, it also doesn't get in the light of day, really. I mean, I've seen that happen. You know, where you don't quite know, you can't tell, because, because they change it, and it doesn't really, something falls through the cracks, and it doesn't really get noticed real well when it's really controversial. I've seen that. Those work sessions over in the Planning Department, for instance.
Thank you. Hi, Tim Potter?
Well, I'm not going to apologize for my age, but thinking back to 1982 and your thoughts about the Assembly at that time, they were meeting in a different room. That was much different. I guess I'd like you to speculate a little bit about what was different about those times or those people or the way they operated or the way the city operated that made it a different atmosphere?
I don't think there was as much at stake. I think there's quite a lot at stake right now. We're dealing with the future, the sustainability of our city, the labor ordinance thing, to my, my way of looking at it, that was way out of order for the Assembly to even be doing something like that, and it needed extended treatment and a different way of being dealt with than it was dealt with. Title 21, do I even need to tell you? Which I don't need to tell you.
Oh, I was at all those hearings.
Yeah.
And the decade of getting to that point.
I think, you know, there's a lot at stake, and there's fundamental policy stuff coming down to the crunch now, and we, you know, it's, it's just more critical. Back then, there was still the aftermath of the oil boom, and, you know, we were dealing with growth, you know, questions, where's our low-income housing going to be, and it was just easier to handle. Also, I think the chairing, you know, I think Paul Baer was just a great chairman back then.
Yeah, it's interesting, Harry Crummins. I'll say one, I'll look at, look at Jane. Broad statement, I think it's always easier to govern when there's not a lot of limits on the budget. Probably a true statement. But I would agree with your observation that almost across the board, it is different, and it's not very pleasant, and it's too bad. And, you know, if you can think about that over the next month, I'll think about it too and try and figure out just really what does define the difference, if, if I can put my finger on it, because it is troubling, and it has changed, and it's not as good as it used to be.
I think a start could be made when, when you have something you know there's going to be a lot of people want to, want to address. I think it's probably okay to just slow it down and just run them into the ground until they absolutely have nothing left to say. I mean, it's, it's a trick that's worked for an awfully long time.
I think one big difference between now and 1982 is, in 1982, we met every week, and we had two weeks off in July, and then two weeks off at Christmas if we had finished the budget, but we met every week. So, there was more time. Other questions? Thank you, Steve. Would anyone else like to testify? Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Walters, and thanks for taking the time to take public testimony on the public hearing process. I don't think there's a problem with the public testimony process so long as the public, the people that make their way down here and come before the Assembly are allowed to speak. This problem has only crept up because the Assembly over the last few years has pretty much done the wrong thing. When there's controversial issues that spring up, like Title 21, which you'd think wouldn't be that controversial, or the summer of hate that we had, where people were being busted in from the valley, you know, at least people were allowed to speak. People I disagreed with on that particular ordinance were coming in and taking up public time, and the Assembly heard everybody. It seems to me that this has really come to a head, because we had an election this past April, and the Assembly was hell-bent on repealing basic collective bargaining and union rights prior to the election. And there was this timetable, and then Ernie Hall seemed to get nervous about, what do we do? We got to cut it off. We got to cut it off. There's too many people. We're actually going to put this off past the election. And that's when this problem, I think, came to a, came to a head. I agree with everything Steve Heimel said as well, but so long as people, you know, if you're doing and passing ordinances that elicit public response, then maybe members of the Assembly ought to, ought to take a look at themselves and ask themselves if they're doing the right thing. Because if you're passing things that are controversial and have people lining up outside for, you know, weeks on end, we have to have testimony, then maybe all the other business ought to be just put aside. So, that's pretty much what I've got to say. I think there's, I think there's certain members of the Assembly, at least six by my count, that don't enjoy their jobs and might want to take a good look at whether they want to resign or not run for reelection, because part of the job of an Assembly person, as I see it, is to do right by your constituents. And what that means is, once a week, when there's public testimony, you get to sit there and listen to the public come and give their testimony. So, that's my two cents, and thanks for hearing me.
Thank you. Joel?
Kelly, thanks for coming down. Funny, when you were talking about the process by which the ordinance came, in 67, 37 is an example of, of the kind of, it's, it's the outlier that we're, that we're having this discussion about. It was the outlier effect of, and the words that came to my mind is called garbage in, garbage out, right? If you don't involve the public in the, in the front half, you dealt the public on the back half. So, those are the two, kind of the conundrum that we face in trying to advise a body about how to engage the public. If you don't engage them before, you will engage them in the end. So, that is part of what I get frustrated with, because it feels to me like the, the struggle is how to create a process by which the public is engaged on the front end of these processes, so that you mitigate the drama at the back end. And so, I just wanted to reflect on that, because I do think 37 is an outlier, like you referenced. It is, it was a huge reaction to a group of people being basically blindsided by a, a, a very calculated activity. We need to be careful not to be so cynical as to say it will never happen again, because of course it will happen again if the time is right and, and the stars align. But I just want to use this to one more time, kind of make my pitch, that if the public, writ large, is engaged in the creation, if there is some kind of better structure through the community councils, as has been suggested earlier, to vet ideas before they come to the body, you will not have the crowd. The crowd is a product of exclusionary behavior, right? It is. It is a project of not being part of the process.
And bad policy.
And bad policy. Bad policy can be rectified, if you, if that's the intent. If the intent is good policy, it can be rectified, right? So, I thank you for bringing that up, because it just, I think it's really important that this is like a, this is like a, like a scale, right? If you don't engage here, this is the outcome. And we need to be careful not to punish the public for being excluded at the front end when they need to respond at the back end.
But do you think, Joel, if I might ask you this, if, what if they were, what if the policy, that particular ordinance, would have been really great public policy, and the public was excluded on the front end? Do you think the public would have come out and forced at the back end if it was really great public policy?
No.
So, there's a combination here. It's exclusionary combined with really bad policy that ultimately, I think, puts the public's safety at risk, because when you create a harvest ground for other municipalities in the state and outside in the Lower 48 for firemen and cops, our first responders, that are, that are getting absolutely railroaded by, by an ordinance that's so controversial, we just had a court rule, whether it was legislative or not. I mean, how ridiculous is that? I mean, that's, there's your sign: bad policy. And that's what this is all about. And I would hate for this body to go back and to give the Assembly a, I don't know, a pass or a mechanism by which they can ultimately, if they do the right thing up front, ultimately cut public testimony off. If you're doing something, everybody that wants to come down here and speak, until the gavel comes down, if no one's in the building, that's it. And if that takes six months, I, as a taxpayer of the city, I don't care.
Mr. Tim, Carolyn?
A question about, when you, when you have a controversy, controversial issue like 37 was, and it becomes very clear after the first evening that you're going to have a ton of people that want to speak, what are your thoughts on continuation to regular meetings? Or do you think at that time that there should be a significant direction by the Assembly to go to special meetings that just deal with that subject, so that there's no other things contributing to the evening? So, you know, one way to, when you say slow it down, maybe you don't have to slow it down, but to make sure that the people get a chance to speak, the Assembly should have special meetings, as they, I think, kind of tried to do, where the only subject matter of that evening is that issue. And if it takes two or three special meetings, then that's how they deal with it.
I think that'd be great. I would think they could have done that. But again, looking at that particular issue, I think a lot of it had to do with an election that was upcoming, and the mayor and the chairman, Ernie Hall, wanting to put it to bed before the election. And ultimately, I think that's what he did. I think, if my memory serves, he cut the testimony off, and that's where this whole thing erupted from. Is that right?
He got the, yes. I mean, they cut the testimony off, then they proposed an ordinance for structuring public process that legislated a variety of, of methods for dealing with large crowds, and then that was tabled, and then they created this task force.
Well, I would hope on your recommendation, maybe, and I'm not being sarcastic here at all, I hope you recommend to some of the Assembly members that if you don't like listening to the public, perhaps you should look for another line of work, honestly.
Carolyn?
No, I, I really appreciate the testimony we've just heard. I think it's right on. But I think we have to be very careful that when we propose changes, that we realize there are limited cases that come up that cause a problem. I think that so many of the things that we've heard about could have been handled if the Assembly were willing to sit through, listen to the public, follow their charge. So, I'm going to be pretty cautious about changes. I think we have a good charter. I think we have good ordinances, but that doesn't always say that the people that carry those out, carry them out with the best interest of the public. And I, I think somehow you covered that very well.
Thank you, Arliss.
Carolyn?
Yeah, hi, Kelly. Quick question. When you say everyone should speak, and I tend to be completely on your side, but I'm going to ask you the same question I asked Mel earlier. Where is your limitation as to people that can speak? We had testimony cut off on 37, but we had 64 that went on for months with people being allowed to testify who were from, not within the municipality of Anchorage, Wasilla, Palmer, Fairbanks, you name it. Where do you believe that cutoff should be at, or do you have an opinion?
You know, I do have an opinion, and it shifted during AO 37. I mean, if you have to have a standard, Debbie Osceander allowed, as everybody knows, people from Wasilla, who were adamant, I'm, they might as well have worn T-shirts stating they were from Wasilla and traveling in on Wasilla buses. But one could make the case that they're commuting into town, and maybe it should be the honor system. I think that if somebody lives in Wasilla and in ordinance 64 just has a problem with that ordinance and has no business in Anchorage, either, you know, they don't work in Anchorage and they don't live in Anchorage, maybe it's an honor system that, hey, look, testimony is reserved for people that either live in the Anchorage Bowl, the borough, or that work in the borough. Even if you're commuting from Wasilla, I'd accept that, and then have it be an honor system, because, you know, you're never going to have a perfect solution to this, but in, in hindsight, I would rather err on letting everyone speak, because I sat through AO 64, and I came down here, and it was, you know what I had a laugh at is the ordinance 37. Some of the most well-behaved lines and groups of people were at that ordinance. I can't say the same at ordinance 64. There is all kinds of nasty hatred and intimidation and just stuff going on, not only in this building and in this chamber, but out on the lawn. It was really, really ugly. And, and hearing some Assembly members comment that they felt threatened during AO 37 was, I was like, you know what? Where were you during AO 64? The AO 37 wasn't threatening. AO 64 was kind of a threatening crowd.
I was here with you, Kelly. I remember it quite well, and I remember feeling quite threatened.
So, to answer your question and sum it up, Carolyn, I would say I'd err on, on I- So to answer your question and sum it up, Carolyn, I would say I'd err on, I'm all about the public testifying. And if somebody wants to come all the way down from Wasilla and testify, you know, if they live here or work here, okay. And even though they don't, if they're cheating the system just to get their hatred out, well, fine. If we have to err on that, everybody gets a chance to speak till the last person speaks and the gavel comes down. And I'll say it again, if you don't like, if you're a public servant and elected to public office, and you don't like dealing with the public or listening to what the public has to say, then get another line of work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to share? Would anyone else like to testify?
Can I say something again, regarding what Mr. Potter had said before about the idea, just to let you know, as far as-
Wait, wait, wait. I know you're asking if you can testify again. Eugene, are you going to testify?
Can I get that one to someone else before I get to the floor?
I believe you're the last person, and he's now the person who wants to speak again. And so I'm asking for people who want to testify for the first time to speak now. Yes, it is.
Okay, just checking. My name is Eugene Haberman, H-A-B-E-R-M-A-N. Tonight, Tuesday, September 3, 2013, I am addressing you in response to your public invitation as stated in the press release stated yesterday, Monday, September 2, 2013, to seek input from the community on the assembly hearing process. The first press release was released a few days earlier, just a couple of days before the start of Labor Day weekend. Prior to this, I released to the Anchorage Municipal Assembly Mayor Dan Sullivan and members of the public, including members of the Alaska Press, a series of reports with regards to my continued investigation in the public process used by Anchorage officials when conducting meetings, including board and commission meetings. This ongoing work came about as a result of my earlier decision on April 4, 2012, to investigate the process used by officials associated with the municipality of Anchorage when reviewing the election held in Anchorage on Tuesday, April 3, 2012. An election in which more than 40% of the polling precincts ran out of ballots for voters to vote in that election. Among the concerns addressed in these reports include my concern in the failure of Anchorage public officials, including members of the Anchorage Municipal Assembly, when conducting public meetings to be in violation of Alaska's Open Meetings Law, Alaska Statute 44.62.310, and Alaska Statute 29.20.02A, and the Anchorage Charter, Section 17.05. In Alaska Statute 29.20.020, it states that, quote, "Meetings of all municipal bodies shall be public as provided in Alaska Statute 44.62.310, the government bodies shall provide reasonable opportunity for the public to be heard at regular and special meetings." In the Anchorage Charter, Section 17.05, it states that, Section 17.05 Public Meetings, A, quote, "All meetings of the Assembly, the school board, and other boards and commissions shall be public. The Assembly by ordinance shall adopt procedures for maximum reasonable public notice of all meetings. At each such meeting, the public shall have reasonable opportunity to be heard." When reviewing the public process, those Anchorage officials have used and continue to use when conducting meetings, I continue to find Anchorage officials conducting the meetings that are in violation of laws noted above. On Tuesday, May 22, 2013, I submitted a detailed testimony to the Anchorage Municipal Assembly during a hearing on amending Anchorage Municipal Code 2.30 regarding the taking of public testimony at public hearings. During my testimony on this ordinance, I stated that, quote, "When conducting meetings with regards to the proposed ordinance noted above, my findings indicate that you have violated all the laws noted above," end of quote. After testimony was completed for this ordinance, the Anchorage Municipal Assembly voted in favor to postpone a decision on voting on this ordinance indefinitely. During the assembly meeting of Tuesday, June 4, 2013, the Anchorage Municipal Assembly passed a resolution AR 2013-46 that will provide for establishing a citizens' task force to advise and assist the Assembly in its development of procedures governing the Assembly's conduct of public hearings open to testimony from members of the public. Unfortunately, with the passing of this resolution, the Anchorage Municipal Assembly had failed to follow the appropriate legal steps in establishing a task force. Such a task force should have been established after reducing an ordinance for public hearing and establishing with such a task force. No such hearing had occurred. Furthermore, the resolution fails to identify the persons involved in the important process of members of this task force. When addressing this last issue, I found conflicting answers by members of this task force with regards to who had appointed them. Since the passing of this resolution, an information memorandum AM 3049-2013 was on the agenda of the Anchorage Municipal Assembly during the Anchorage Municipal Assembly meeting of June 18. This memorandum noted the appointment of Assembly members L.V. Gray Jackson, Dick Trainey, and Jennifer Johnson to the Assembly Rules Committee. It noted that, quote, "The Assembly Chair and members of Assembly Rules Committee will be available to assist the citizens' task force during organizational consideration to facilitate citizens' task force meeting and respond to questions," end of quote. On Thursday, July 11, 2013, a meeting of the citizens' task force was held. Unfortunately, not until my personal presence at this meeting was I made aware of who were the members of this task force. Among those members of this task force include Amanda Moser, who currently holds the position of Deputy Municipal Clerk with the municipality of Anchorage. An agenda for this meeting was made available at this meeting for those attending this meeting. Prior to this time, no agenda for this meeting was made public. This situation resulted in that meeting being in violation of the Alaska's Open Meetings Law of the state of Alaska. Toward the beginning of this meeting, I had addressed my concern about this issue before those present at the meeting. In response, members of this task force continued the meeting without appropriately addressing the meeting by taking the appropriate steps by canceling this meeting. Since the meeting of July 11, 2013, I have inquired further as to the establishment of the citizens' task force noted above. In my inquiry, I found several members of this task force unaware of the details of the Open Meetings Law for the state of Alaska. Prior to this hearing tonight, this task force held two other meetings on Thursday, July 25, 2013, and Thursday, August 22, 2013. I was present at these meetings and then witnessed, again, your task force being in violation of the Alaska's, of the Open Meetings Law for the state of Alaska. In my closing statement to you tonight, your appointment by Anchorage officials to this task force has provided a false hope that public concerns over public testimony at public meetings would be corrected. Today, we have a situation in which the fox has guarded the hen house. The only appropriate way fit for this to be corrected by you is for you to submit your resignation tonight, along with all members of the Anchorage Municipal Assembly and Mayor Dan Sullivan. Thank you. Any questions?
Other requests?
Thank you.
Yes, to the gentleman in the back of the room. I do know that, and I'd like to ask him a question, if he could come back up to the podium.
Would you please come, sir?
Yes. And one of our first speakers from the night. And I'd like to ask him a specific question, not about fluoride, but about his thoughts on creating a list or non-list, or what he believes, after giving it some thought, what an answer, an appropriate approach might be. For the benefit of getting that input tonight as we go on to our next series of thought processes in trying to figure this system out.
And this is Darrell Land.
Yeah, I'm still Darrell. Land's on, sorry. Yeah, when you said that, it just made me think of a few things, because I was here for Title 21 and everything that went along with that. And I remember them making a list, and I also remember people starting to, like, when it was coming down to the end, and they were actually going to end one of the meetings, they were just adding, well, this person might come, and they're adding people to the list. So I think as far as the list goes, if they're signing up, you're signing up for you. You're not writing your friends, who may be able to make it to the next meeting, so you have more people to drag it out. I also think that there needs to be some kind of cutoff, like what you were saying, you know, coming to that meeting. So I think that two potential answers to this problem, because I'll tell you, I was one of the three people that spoke in favor of Prop 37, and I'm proud of that fact. How I was treated, I'm from Detroit, I don't really scare too easily, but I was escorted out by the police. I was booed, I was hissed, I was told to go back to Detroit, and all kinds of things like that. What happened, I think, with Prop 37 and how this whole committee task force came about was because, one reason and one reason only, it was the amount of union people. This wasn't about people that, you know, this was mass public appeal. This was the unions that cared and what brought them up.
Darrell, I'd like you to get back to the thoughts about how-
Well, I'm going to tie that in. What I'm saying is, they could continually say, have more people added, and their idea was to push that thing out forever. My thought, my suggestion to you was that there needs to be a limit. Either you come in, it could be two ways. One, you come in that night, and if you're there that night, you sign up that night. And if you don't come in that night and you sign, take the time to sign up that night, then you don't testify. Or another alternative would be to put up a sign up online and set a limit on it. If you can't, if you don't have the brains or whatever to get out there and sign up before this time, then, no, then the testimony would be cut off. Because, like I said, this would prevent people or organizations from continuing to pull out, oh, we need more people, let's push this, push this, push this.
Carolyn?
I'm going to take a little bit of offense to one of your comments. My mother is not online. If there's no parking in that parking lot, and she cannot get in the store to testify because the fire marshal is not allowing people in, and she's not computer savvy, then there's a failure on the part of this municipality that she does not have the ability to come and speak her mind. You cannot say that just because somebody can not get online, they've got a problem.
I didn't say that. And my point was, is my first point was that people can come here. I'm pretty sure that someone could have dropped her off at the door, and she could have came in and signed up. I don't know for sure if she's a handicapped or unable to do that, and I'm sorry that people have to park over. But this one issue, this Prop 37, this issue only, Title 21 didn't have people parking. I wasn't here in 2009 for the 64, but Title 21, you might have had to walk from the back of the parking lot, and if, you know, I walk here. I walk. So I'm not afraid to walk a couple miles to get here every time I come. So I'm sorry that I offended you, but I think that if people really can care about an issue, that they need to make an effort to come here that night. Because I tell you what, I came here and I've sat here for four or five hour meetings to speak my three minutes at the end of it, and I've sat through the whole thing because I care about it.
Yeah. Darrell, I think that Carolyn's comment is that, whatever the circumstances were, we don't even have to say that it's 37. There could be something next week that comes up that's real hot, and everybody comes down.
Oh, it's coming up next week.
And the real issue is, there were people that, in my opinion, were disenfranchised from before the meeting even started, because we didn't have the facility set up in a fashion to accommodate the people that came and wanted to attend the meeting. And, you know, we, that's a rare event. You know, certainly it's not the standard event that happens. But, you know, this committee, I think, needs to give some direction of sorts about what a future chairperson or the Assembly may want to do in that circumstance. Because maybe she could have gotten dropped off, but maybe she couldn't. I mean-
I do also like your idea about, you know, if there is an overwhelming amount to break off and if for a specific item to have special meetings like you had suggested, if there's something that brings out that much public support, then I think having the Assembly come to a special meeting on that and keep that separate from their regular meetings is more than warranted.
You know, I guess my bottom line in some sense is that, you know, living in this country and having a democracy, as some people said, is, can be messy, and sometimes it can be very painful. But likewise, you know, government is here to serve us. It's for us, and it should not be so darn difficult to participate that it's just, it's less effort to just not participate. We need to make it relatively friendly to be able to participate in our government.
Amen to that, brother.
So that's kind of my closing statement for that.
Yeah, no problem. And fluoride-free Alaska on Facebook. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify?
Could I make an additional comment?
Yes, ma'am. The reason I'm saying yes, we already did that once.
I would love to ask her a question.
Mr. Potter?
Me?
Do you have any other comments you'd like to make tonight?
Well, thank you. I, for one thing, I just have to say one thing. I'm not a member of a union, and I wasn't even involved in the whole 37 thing, but I feel very strongly about, you know, what you're doing here. And so that's one thing I take, exception to what Darrell said. But the comment that I actually wanted to make was that, after the election of 2012, in one of those meetings where I and maybe about 10 or 15 other people stayed to the bitter end of an assembly meeting, our only opportunity ever to publicly testify about the election, there was a gentleman who got up to testify, and he was talking about voter turnout, and how the Assembly, he was talking about ways in which the Assembly could increase voter turnout. And I guess this is partly to address the question that you asked of Steve Heimel, where you were both in agreement that things had seemed to have changed since 1982. And what this man was talking about was, you know, getting more people out and franchising more people. And it seemed to me that that very fact, that we had to wait until the bitter end of an assembly meeting to say anything about all the people who had been disenfranchised in that election, was itself a fundamental example of disenfranchisement. It seems to me what has changed since 1982, or from whenever things were better, I hope they were, because they're pretty sad now, is that there is not, on the overall sense of how our elected officials are doing things, any kind of care about whether the public is enfranchised. It's, we want to do things our way, we don't want to have to listen to anyone who disagrees with us. So that's just my observation.
Well, I appreciate coming back up and giving us that. Two thoughts. Number one, I am very pleased to be living in a place where people with polar opposite opinions on things can come out to a meeting and discuss them and be semi-civil, in fact, very civil tonight. And I really appreciate that. I will give an observation tonight about what's different about now in 1982. When the charter was done and unification occurred, there was a brilliant, brilliant thing, one of many brilliant things that people on this body had to do with. And one was the creation of a grassroots outreach, and that was the community councils. That's written into the charter. And if you look at the difference between how the Federation of Community Councils, the organizational body, that really helped fund and have staffing to train and organize and help get messages out, notices out, and all that, if you go and look at what the participation is on the part of the Assembly and the municipal budget now in support of the Federation of Community Councils versus what it was then, I think that will show you what a distinct difference there is in the community now versus then. Because I go to community councils all the time, and I'm one of the few that seems to be pumping breath into some of the community councils, because I bring, in my opinion, not controversial projects, but to some people they are, to their community council meetings to have the public discussion. And it is really sad to see where many of the community councils are today. There are still some that are very active, but some of the original founders and participants are getting up in age, have passed, don't have the energy to be involved and do all the work anymore, and there's not a lot of young people coming up behind them. And a lot of it is that there's no education, a lot of people don't even understand what a community council is, how to get involved, any of that. And out of all this, and it doesn't necessarily have anything to do with how the Assembly runs its public hearings, but as far as actually participating- assembly runs its public hearings, but as far as actually participation in the community, uh, I think we have to leak, look, you know, deep inside ourselves and look to the past of why that was in the charter to start with, and see the value that it did give to this city, and that, you know, we should do everything we can to put some money back in it, support it, and let it grow, because that was really the grassroots connection to the community.
I really thank you for explaining that, because, you know, I came up to Anchorage also in 1982, and then I left in '87, came back in 1990. I've had a job since then at the Justice Center at UAA. And it wasn't until about 19, it was actually possibly even as late as 2000 or 2001, that I even ever heard that there was such a thing as a community council in Anchorage, which I think goes to underline, underscore your point about the need for more education and more activity with community councils.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Arles?
Well, I was just going to say, I, um, remember the Charter Commission was very, very strongly supportive of community councils. Uh, I intend, I'm one of the aged ones, uh, so I don't go consistently, but often attend Rogers Park and see my fellow citizen here, well-attended, take care of issues, an effective voice, and, uh, so I, I don't know how other community councils are doing, but this is one that I'm very proud of. Do you agree, Bob? You better.
Without any pressure at all, yes, absolutely, I agree. And, and Arles is always value-added to the meeting and is very regular in attendance.
Thank you. Mr. Churchill?
If possible, I'd like to ask Mr. Haberman a question, if he's willing.
Gene, would you please come forward while Bob Churchill forms his question for you?
Well, it took me a while to absorb, and I'm not sure that I totally have what you had to say. I, I guess the concern I would have, I understand your concern with process, but succinctly, what harm have you seen flow from this committee, uh, as a whole, in how we've discharged our duties?
Uh, since day one, but even before you were on the committee, the process was violated by the appointment process and how it was, how it was done.
No, no, let me clarify. I'm not asking to argue or debate whether it was violated or not violated. I know you feel strongly about that, and what I'm asking is...
Can I make one, just one point on this before, before, on this question?
Let him ask.
Just, just this point. Uh, I appreciate your question.
Let him ask the question.
I appreciate you, this is the first time that I have been addressed a question on this, okay?
Gene? Let him pose the question, please.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The question being, what, what harm? You've been at our meetings, you've now been at our, what harm have you seen flow from the committee as a whole?
Well, look, look here tonight, okay? Just an example at the body. Look at the number of people that attended this meeting, the idea of getting public input, okay? As a public, the General Committee knows, back on the labor ordinance situation, there were quote-unquote, "several hundred" people that didn't have an opportunity to testify. Where are those several hundred people? The timing, the scheduling, and the announcements of this thing was, was not, was, were, open meetings law, what is the open meetings law and what's the basis, the three points? Number one, is give a reasonable opportunity for the people to know about a meeting coming, a public meeting, to know beforehand, know beforehand what's going to be, what's the content of that meeting, like the, like the agenda, we call it the agenda. And the, the other part of the, the open meetings law, it's, open meetings law doesn't deal with the right to speak. That's a separate law that I addressed in my testimony. But the open meetings law also, when you, when a meeting is conducted, the people in the, in the people who are attending, the public, needs to understand what you're doing. It can't be, uh, so-called Greek to them, a language they don't understand unless they're Greek, okay? That's, that's the truth. And the other thing is, when a vote is taken, the process, the vote by the body, okay? It's got to be done in, in a way, and I use the word kosher, okay? For those who are from the New York East Coast area would know that very well. It's got to be kosher. The Assembly, from time after time, and my investigation has been violating the OMA, and then in your case, you got caught into this thing.
I guess then, to sum up what you're telling me, you feel we'd have more people here to testify, uh, if, if the, the process had had been done differently?
Well, the process from the...
Yes or no?
You would have had, yeah, you're right. If the process had been, you would, there would be no question, you would have had much more people attending. I mean, look, just in the recent past, a couple hundred people were, were not denied testimony, and then, you know...
Again, I don't want to debate, I'm just trying to clarify what your opinion is. So, thank you very much.
But I'd like to just make one point to, I appreciate your question and bring me back. My investigation has been ongoing since April 4th. It's been a series of reports. Maybe you don't know about the details reports. One part of the problem has been, there's been a news blackout of my reports, okay? The other thing is, when I address these reports to the Assembly, Anchorage Municipal Assembly, go before the body and address it like I've done for you today, the standard practice has been, "Any questions? No questions. No comment." They want me away. See, the debate going on, if the debate was going on between me and them in a public meeting, it would encourage local press to let the public know what the heck's going on. Now, what is going to happen?
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This task force was created by a resolution of the Anchorage Assembly on June 4th, and we've been doing our work since then. Uh, the fifth item on the agenda is audience participation. Does anybody want to talk to us about anything?
They should be talked out.
They get to do one more by the apple. All public meetings have a public participation component. This is one of them. Hi.
Hello, my name is, my name is Jason Nagry, and, uh, thank you for coming together on the Citizen Task Force. Um, I didn't know until Joe, or Eugene, just said, I guess, that there was not a correct public hearing process on the appointment of the members or something, but he said that was a violation of, of the open meetings law.
First time we heard about it, too.
Yeah, so that was news to me. Um, the thing I want to maybe discuss is, the last time I went to the assembly meeting, the security guard, he's getting more and more pushy and more and more, because we're with fluoride-free Alaska, and it's like, because we're getting ignored by the Assembly, and we're kind of getting kind of like poo-pooed off. The security guard here now also thinks that he has a duty to somehow intimidate us, uh, and, and, and particularly, he, he kind of pulled me aside, he's like, you know, uh, and then he showed me even his bullet clip, and he said he has enough bullets for all of us here. And I know that, that's, it was, I, I said, I, I'll take that as a joke for right now, but I, I was with another friend of mine, and he overheard it, and he did not think it was a joke at all, and he's still upset about it. And, uh, but it's something that needs to be addressed. We shouldn't be just kind of pushed away because we're talking about the drinking water, and whenever you speak about the drinking water, somehow you can't say nothing, because we live in America, and somehow there's some, uh, maybe the Department of Defense makes, you know, "We need to drink it," or there's some higher authority, you know, "You're supposed to be American and shut up and drink your fluoridated water," and, you know. So, we can't say it's Kool-Aid depleted, you know, depleted uranium Kool-Aid that we need to be stopping from drinking, but the thing I want to say is basically, we, what we're saying here is legitimate. Our drinking water is very important, and we should not be pushed around and be intimidated by the security guard, and it's also, I just, I don't know, it's, it's really undermining the whole government, the whole participation and the whole thing, and it's kind of creating a, a system of them versus us, or us versus them, and it's, it's supposed to be all of us together, and that we, that we work together, and not that we are trying to fight this bureaucracy who's trying to, you know, trying to not, not listen to us and kind of ignore us, and, and I like, I like, there was an idea that floated around here where we have an assembly meeting every week, and I like that idea, because that would encourage more participation, it would encourage twice as much participation, and, um, things wouldn't have to go so hurried, because I see the Assembly members, they're hurrying up, hurry, 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 trying to get through the big schedule, or it takes to 11 or whatever, and then the three-minute timer goes off, and then you gotta wait another two weeks before you can speak, you know, so.
Um, I just want to say, thank you for bringing that question of the security guard's attitude to the fore, and we will pass it on to the people who can do something about it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, a question regarding the incident, do you, do you and your friend know, could you identify the security guard involved?
Absolutely, yeah.
Who have you reported it to?
Well, I, I told the Assembly when I went up, uh, at the audience participation part, last time I spoke, and I must speak in here about it now.
You know, I, I guess I would start with the Omsbudsman's Office and give them a call, Darrell Hess, and, and, uh, I probably have his, his number, but I would, I would start there, and if you have the names, dates, times, specific language, I would really encourage you to start there. I, I mean, I, I think that would be important to do. If somebody, somebody pulled a revolver, a firearm, and said, "I've got enough bullets for everybody here," I, that, that seems to be completely outrageous to me.
Yeah, for me, it was also a little bit of a shock. I said, I, you know, "I may speak about this, now you just showed me this," it's like, it's kind of, you know, ridiculous.
But I would encourage all Mr. Hess and the Omsbudsman's Office. I, I think he would be responsive.
That, that would be nice, because it's not only the security guard here, it's all those, the security guard at the City Hall when we were protesting, we had a sign in remembrance of what happened in Hooper Bay, which was the worst fluoride accident in U.S. history, and they confiscated the sign, um, that was there, and they tried to throw it in the dumpster over at McGinley's, and I, luckily I was able to save the sign. But it's, it's just the security guards kind of like, are kind of against us, because they know that the city is kind of against us, or some, and we really don't want to be against us, we just want to be together and bring an issue up and have a normal discussion. And I guess the task force on fluoridation would be the good thing to have, but that's not what we're here to discuss right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify under audience participation?
Three minutes on fluoride. Mostly fluoride-free water, just to let you know, bottled water isn't exactly safe. Um, yeah, fluoride, uh, I'm Darrell Anzon still, um, from Fluoride-Free Alaska. Um, one of the points that I want to make up is the point that Jason just brought up. This is an important public safety, public health issue that, I think, but, I believe, Gene, you said before, when you talked about the consent agenda, that your words for, they put things on the consent agenda that were, um, was unimportant, I remember what the words you used.
Non-controversial.
Okay, non-controversial. They put fluoride on that agenda.
Oh.
They, they put that on the consent agenda initially. It was on a consent agenda from last time, and because L.D. Jackson had the, and Mr. Steele, mind you, had the courage to say, "You know what? This seems like they're kind of brushing them off. This seems like they're kind of trying to limit public testimony." And I appreciate them both having said that, but they initially, Mr. Trombley, Mr. Flynn, and Mr. Birch were the original cosponsors of this, and this, this, um, resolution in the consent agenda had, the S version, the AR-230S, has an amendment added to it that has an advisory petition on it. So, they want us to go petition for our rights. Now, under the Clean Drinking Water Act of 1974, federal law that I'm sure some of you are familiar with, it says I have a right to clean water. The Constitution of this country and the Declaration of Independence talk about life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Well, these things include the right to not be forcefully medicated. I don't care if fluoride is good for me. I don't want it. That's the bottom line, what I'm saying. It doesn't matter if it's good for me, because as an American citizen, as a sovereign citizen, as a free person, I have a right to clean water. I have a right to not be forcibly medicated. Now, mind you, Mr. Honeman tried to tell me it was a product. I said, "You're right, it's an industrial waste product." In fact, the stuff that you get for Anchorage's water supply comes from Florida, it comes from the phosphate mining industry, it's not pharmaceutical grade. It is literally industrial waste. That's the bottom line here. They're not using a pharmaceutical-grade material, they're not using a naturally occurring material. They, calcium fluoride and magnesium fluoride both occur naturally. Sodium fluoride, especially the sodium hexafluoride or the florcilic acid that they're using, is not a naturally occurring mineral. These are some of the things that they are putting out there and saying, "This is untrue, this warrants a task force, it's a, it's a good thing, you can prove me wrong." Go ahead, look into science, get a form of task force like this, get people from one side, get people from the other side, and let's talk about this. Let's talk about the science. Let's talk about the fact that the most recent thing to come out from the CDC, the Center for Disease Control, was a study they commissioned in 2010. They studied the non-cancerous effects of the most cancerous substance known to man. They don't have the courage to look into the other side of it, and that's what I've been running into with the Assembly. I would encourage you, if you don't know about it, please check out Fluoride-Free Alaska. I'll tell you two films that you can check out on YouTube that are very informative, they're done by doctors, it's in some hodgepodge kind of thing. One is called Fluoride Gate. It talks about that Harvard study that I mentioned, and it also talks about the fact that the EPA Union, the people there, they actually came out against fluoridation, had a man fired, he ended up getting his job back, but there's a lot of stuff that goes along with this, that, and again, I, the reason I wanted to come back up here and say something was hopefully some of you people will look into it on your own, because maybe you're not aware of the issue, but it's a very serious issue. If you have kids and grandkids, you owe it to them to watch either Fluoride Gate or The Great Culling. They are literally, and one, Fluoride Gate's 58 minutes, The Great Culling is about 93 minutes, if I'm that anal. That's how long they are, and I think kids are worth it. We have 250,000 people drinking contaminated water in Anchorage, and many of them are children. Thank you.
Thank you, Darrell. Questions, comments? Comments? Amanda?
Through the chair, I just wanted to take a moment and clarify some concerns regarding the consent agenda that have been brought up during this meeting. The consent agenda is divided into multiple parts. Part of it is resolutions for action, which are proclamations and reconitions. There's also, um, other resolutions for action, bid award, new business, information reports, and then, um, there are ordinances and resolutions that are for introduction, and then those items become items for public hearing that appear at the next meeting. And so, ordinance or resolution, under that section, it's not that items on the consent agenda are less important or different important, it's just items under the, um, public hearing are ordinances, which are changes to the municipal code, and then resolutions that are for action. So, there is a little clarification needed there, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amanda, can I, I want to make sure, because I didn't actually understand what you said, so let me just clarify one more thing. So, when some, when an ordinance or a resolution is on the consent agenda, that's because it's being basically read across, it's for introduction purposes to be carried on to a future meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Items under 9F in the agenda are ordinances or resolutions for introduction, and those require three Assembly members to introduce, and they're not discussed at that meeting, they are carried over and for public hearing and discussion at the, the next meeting.
And, and just to clarify also, um, any Assembly member can pull any item that is on the consent agenda off the consent agenda so that the members can discuss it? So, it's just another thing. All right, with that, would anybody else like to talk to us under audience participation? Hearing and seeing, one more person. You have three minutes. And, and by the way, it is under municipal ordinances that require that public meetings have an audience participation section. That's what we are doing.
On audience participation, I will make one key thing, that's a regular situation almost, almost every time I can imagine. Every time the Assembly, and Assembly meets, they have an Assembly meeting here in this room, they have such a thing called an addendum to the agenda, and infrequently have things called laid on the table. Those actions incorporated, what they've done is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. It stops right there. So, those of you who have been regular attendees, going back years and attending the Assembly meetings, look back in your thoughts and think about how many few meetings they didn't have an addendum to the agenda or laid-on-the-table item. And you'll get the answer is...
And you'll get the answer is, those meetings were OMA, Open Meetings Act violations, which means the actions taken by the public officials, meaning the Assembly, with the mayor there sitting and watching over, is in violation of the Open Meetings Law, which is also grounds for recall of a public official. Thank you.
Thank you. To those of you who are, so here, there is in the back of the room, an agenda, excuse me, a calendar of meetings that are being, that have been scheduled by this Citizens Task Force, and that the next public hearing is October 1st, and that between now and then, we will be meeting on September 12th at noon at the City Hall, and we will be discussing recommendations based on what you told us tonight, as well as some of the work that we've done by looking at the ordinances of other communities. You are cordially invited to give us any additional information that you would like us to consider as we develop our recommendations, and that can be emailed to the clerk, which is on the agenda, or you could obviously deliver it in person to the City Hall. I just want to say thank you for coming out tonight, and we are adjourned. We are not adjourned. Jim?
Just one comment, just to make sure that everybody here knows that not only are you welcome to provide us with whatever thoughts you have prior to that meeting, but also you will be more than pleasantries met if you want to come and sit through that work session that we have.
Absolutely. And additionally, all of our names and all of our emails are listed in the back, and we would be happy and invite you to communicate with us about any of these issues. Thank you. With that, any additional comments from any members? Thank you for coming, thank you to the members for participating. Thank you.